Help us ensure that the welfare of your people will always be our utmost priority. And in the words of Saint Francis of Assisi, in his prayer for peace, which I quote, "Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy." Bless our nation with peace and progress and bless our leaders to govern with integrity, compassion and justice. All these we humbly ask in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you Senator Go.
Secretary, please call the role.
All call of members, Honorable Senator Aquino, Senator Cayetano Allen, Senator Cayetano Pia, Senator De La Rosa, Senator Ersito, Senator Estrada, Senator Gachalian, Senator Go, Senator Ontiveros, Senator Laxon, Senator Lapid, Senator Legarda, Senator Marcoleta, Senator Marcos, Senator Padilla, Senator Pangilinan, Senator Soto, Senator Tulfo Erwin, Senator Tulfo Rafi, Senator Villanueva, Senator Villar Camil, Senator Villar Mark, Senator Zabiri, the Senate President.
With twenty-one senators present, Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority floor leader.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. President, before we proceed, may I just be allowed to uh recognize some guests from the gallery, guests of Senators Villar and Aquino, uh, Mark Villar and Bam Aquino, LGU officials of Luisiana Laguna led by Mayor Jomaver Alvarez and Mayor Venus Hordan of La Paz Starlak, guests of Senator Ersito and Bato de la Rosa, Mayor Ramil Publico with LGU officials of San Vicente Palawan, Mayor Lito Tito with LGU officials of Aborlan Palawan, uh, guests of Senators Legarda and Lapid, Mayor Donald Morgolnon from Ban- Banawi Ifugao, Vice Mayor Ernest Oliver Uy of Iligan City, Mayor Alvi Musa from Alicia, uh, Zamboanga Cibugay, Mayor Rico Puno from Kalatagan na Batangas, guests of Senators Pangilinan and Bongo, Mayor Milagros Faderanga and the local officials from Banton Romblon, Mayor Tessie Jean Nakau of Bakuag Surigao del Norte. Uh, guests of Senator Gachalian, Police Brigadier General Dean Doreyes, Regional Director PNP, Ilocos Region, Police Colonel Claire Balesteros of Ilocos Region, we welcome all of them in this office chamber.
To the aforementioned guests, welcome to your Senate Majority Leader.
Mr. President, at this juncture, I move that we dispense with the reading of the Journal of the Sixth Session Wednesday, August sixth, twenty twenty-five and consider the same as approved.
Any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Sir President, at this juncture, I move that we defer the approval of the Journal of the Seventh Session Monday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Mr. President, I move that we proceed with the reference of business.
Any objection? Hearing none, secretary is directed to comply.
Bills on first reading, Senate Number three five one, enac repealing RA one zero nine one two, the Continuing Professional Development Act of twenty sixteen, Senator De La Rosa.
To the Committee on Civil Service, Government Organization and Professional Regulation.
Three five two, providing for security of tenure for all casual and contractual employees of the government who have rendered the prescribed use of services to the national government and the local government units and for other purposes, Senator De La Rosa.
To the Committee on Civil Service, Government Organization and Professional Regulation.
Three five three, enac providing for Magna Carta of tricycle drivers and operators, institutionalizing mechanisms for its implementation and for other purposes, Senator De La Rosa.
To the Committee on Public Services and Local Government.
Three five four, establishing the Disability Support Fund for the empowerment, full participation and inclusion of persons with disabilities in society and appropriating funds therefore, Senator De La Rosa.
To the Committees on Social Justice, Welfare and Rural Development and Finance.
Three five five, enac providing for the Magna Carta of Berengue Health Workers, Senator De La Rosa.
To the Committees on Health and Demography, Local Government, Ways and Means and Finance.
Three five six, enac recognizing motorcycles as public utility vehicles, amending RA four one three six, the Land Transportation and Traffic Code and RA seven one sixty, the Local Government Code as amended for other purposes, Senator De La Rosa.
To the Committees on Public Services and Local Government.
Three five seven, enac establishing the Philippine National Police Forensic DNA Database, appropriating funds therefore, Senator De La Rosa.
To the Committees on Public Order and Dangerous Drugs, Justice in Human Rights and Finance.
Three five eight, enac mandating law enforcement officers to use a body worn camera during law enforcement operations, providing penalties for violations and appropriating funds therefore, Senator De La Rosa.
To the Committees on Public Order and Dangerous Drugs and Finance.
Three five nine, enac providing for the Administrative Reform and Organisation of the Philippine Coast Guard, repealing RA nine 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 three, the Philippine Coast Guard Law of two thousand nine, Senator De La Rosa.
To the Committees on Public Services, Civil Service, Government Organization and Professional Regulation and Finance.
Three sixty, enac requiring all graduate senior high school and college level students to plant at least two trees each as a civic duty for environment protection and climate change mitigation and appropriating funds therefore, Senator De La Rosa.
To the Committees on Basic Education, Higher Technical Vocational Education and Finance.
Three six one, enac ensuring the senior high school graduates under the K to twelve program are equipped with the knowledge, training and skills demanded in the labor market, enhancing their employability and competitiveness, creating the Batang Magaling Councils to strengthen multi-stakeholder collaboration and support for their employment, allowing deduction of training expenses incurred for the skills development, appropriating funds therefore, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committee on Basic Education, Higher Technical Vocational Education, Ways and Means and Finance.
Three six two, providing for a twenty thousand peso across-the-board increase in the basic multi-salary of all public and elementary and secondary school teachers and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Civil Service, Government Organization and Professional Regulation, Basic Education and Finance.
Three sixty, enac fulfilling the rise and strengthening the privileges of public school teachers under RA four six seven zero, the Magna Carta for public school teachers and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Basic Education, Civil Service, Government Organization and Professional Regulation and Finance.
Three six four, enac providing for government assistance to private basic education, further amending RA six seven two eight, the Government Assistance to Students and Teachers and Private Education Act as amended and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Basic Education and Finance.
Senate Number three six five, enac establishing a national energy policy and regulatory framework for facilities utilizing waste-to-energy technologies, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Energy, Environment, Natural Resources and Climate Change, Ways and Means and Finance.
Three six six, enac providing for a national energy policy and framework for a clean and just energy transition in the country and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Energy, Ways and Means and Finance.
Three six seven, enac enhancing the governance structure of the Energy Regulatory Commission, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Energy, Civil Service, Government Organization and Professional Regulation.
Three six eight, enac amending RA nine five one one, granting the national grid corporation of the Philippines a franchise to engage in the basis of conveying or transmitting electricity through high voltage backbone, system of interconnected transmission lines, substation and related facilities and for other purposes, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Public Services and Ways and Means.
Three six nine, enac providing for a comprehensive and responsive civil registration of vital statistics system, repealing Act Number three seven five three, or the Philippine Law on Registration of Civil Status, providing funds therefore and for other purposes, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Justice in Human Rights and Finance.
Three seventy, enac regulating debt collection and practice debt collection practices to protect debtors from abuses, harassment, unfair treatment and misrepresentation, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committee on Banks, Financial Institutions and Currencies.
Three seven one, enac legalizing the cultivation of hemp and formu- formulating a comprehensive development plan for the hemp industry including research and development and capacity building to strengthen its competence and efficiency, providing funds therefore, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees on Public Order and Dangerous Drugs, Health and Demography and Finance.
Three seven two, enac lowering the minimum age of criminal responsibility, amending RA nine three four four, the Juvenile Justice and Welfare Act of two thousand six as amended and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees on Justice in Human Rights and Women and Children, Family Relations and Gender Equality.
Three seven three, strengthening the protection of private sector workers by establishing a national minimum wage and enhancing penalties for non-compliance, amending PD four four two, the Labor Code of the Philippines, Senator Padilla.
To the Committee on Labor Employment and Human Resources Development.
Three seven four, enac prohibiting online publication and promotion of gambling-related content, providing penalties therefore and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees on Public Information and Mass Media and Games and Amusements.
Three seven five, enac providing for the Magna Carta of Minors, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees on Labor Employment and Human Resources Development and Finance.
Three seven six, enac prohibiting the advertising and sale of sugar, sweetened beverages, junk food and other unhealthy food products in elementary and secondary schools, providing funds therefore and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees on Health and Demography, Basic Education and Finance.
Three seven seven, enac providing indigent job seekers discounted or waived fees and charges in the issuance of certain pre-employment documents issued by the government agencies, Senator Estrada.
To the Committees on Labor Employment and Human Resources Development and Social Justice, Welfare and Rural Development.
Three seven eight, enac providing for a five-year validity period of the professional identification cards of all professionals under the Professional Regulation Commission, Senator Estrada.
To the Committees on Civil Service, Government Organization and Professional Regulation.
Three seven nine, enac prohibiting game fixing and providing penalties for violations thereof, Senator Estrada.
To the Committees on Sports and Games and Amusements.
Three eighty, enac creating the Department of Disaster Resilience defining its mandate, powers and functions and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Estrada.
To the Committees on National Defense and Security, Peace Unification and Reconciliation, Civil Service, Government Organization and Professional Regulation, Ways and Means and Finance.
Three eight one, enac amending RA seven nine two five, the Public Telecommunications Policy Act of the Philippines by requiring public telecommunications entities and internet service providers to institute a refund mechanism for service outages and disruptions, Senator Estrada.
To the Committee on Public Services.
Three eight two, enac prohibiting all public telecommunications entities and information and communications technology providers from imposing an expiration period on the validity of prepaid load credits and under for features, Senator Estrada.
To the Committee on Public Services.
Three eight three, enac establishing the Philippine Geriatric Medical Center, otherwise known as the Senior Citizens Hospital and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Estrada.
To the Committees on Health and Demography, Ways and Means and Finance.
Three eight four, enac strengthening the Department of National Defense proper and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Estrada.
To the Committees on National Defense and Security, Peace Unification and Reconciliation and Finance.
Three eighty five, enac mandating the establishment, management, maintenance and regulation of rainwater harvesting facility in all institutional, commercial, industrial and residential development projects in Metro Manila, Senator Estrada.
To the Committees on Public Works, Sustainable Development Goals, Innovation and Future Thinking and Ways and Means.
Three eight six, enac promoting the production of outstanding and world-class Filipino motion pictures, providing incentives to filmmakers and actors claiming honors in international film competitions and for other purposes, Senator Estrada.
To the Committees on Public Information and Mass Media, Ways and Means and Finance.
Three eight seven, enac regulating the accessibility and marketing of online gambling in the Philippines, reducing gambling-related addiction and harm, establishing a harm mitigation levy and for other purpose, Senator Ontiveros.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements and Ways and Means.
Three eight eight, enac providing for a national policy preventing adolescent pregnancies, institutionalizing social protection for adolescent parents and providing funds therefore, Senator Ontiveros.
To the Committees on Women, Children, Family Relations and Gender Equality, Social Justice, Welfare and Rural Development and Finance.
Three eight nine, enac ensuring the development, promotion and protection of agricultural cooperatives, Senator Ontiveros.
To the Committees in Agriculture, Food and Garden Reform, Cooperatives, Ways and Means and Finance.
Three ninety, enac providing for the Magna Carta of Berengue Health Workers, Senator Ontiveros.
To the Committees on Health and Demography, Local Government, Ways and Means and Finance.
Three nine one, providing for the Magna Carta of the Out-of-School Youth, Senator Ontiveros.
To the Committees on Youth and Finance.
Three nine two, enac strengthening the constitutional rights of government employees to self-organization, collective negotiation, peaceful concerted activities and the use of voluntary modes of dispute resolution, Senator Ontiveros.
To the Committee on Civil Service, Government Organization and Professional Regulation.
Three nine three, enac providing for the universal disability support allowance for persons with disabilities appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes, Senator Ontiveros.
To the Committees on Social Justice, Welfare and Rural Development and Finance.
Three nine four, enac expanding the grounds for dissolution of marriage, instituting divorce and setting the procedures thereof, providing protections to the parties to the marriage and its common children, amending for this purpose EO two oh nine, or the Family Code of the Philippines, Senator Ontiveros.
To the Committee on Women, Children, Family Relations and Gender Equality.
Three nine five, enac regulating the rational exploration, development and utilization of mineral resources, repealing RA seven nine four two, or the Philippine Mining Act of nineteen ninety five and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Ontiveros.
To the Committees in Environment, Natural Resources and Climate Change, Ways and Means and Finance.
Three nine six, enac providing for parent support and for other purposes, Senator Laxon.
To the Committee on Women, Children, Family Relations and Gender Equality.
Three nine seven, enac further strengthening the foreign currency deposit law, amending RA six four two six, the Foreign Currency Deposit Act of the Philippines as amended, Senator Laxon.
To the Committee on Banks, Financial Institutions and Currencies.
Three nine eight, enac expanding the scope and coverage of RA forty two hundred, otherwise known as an act to prohibit and penalize wiretapping and other related violations of the privacy of communication and for other purposes, Senator Laxon.
To the Committees on Public Order and Dangerous Drugs, the National Defense and Security, Peace Unification and Reconciliation.
Three nine nine, enac providing for a comprehensive nursing law towards a quality healthcare system and appropriating funds therefore, repealing RA nine one seven three, the Philippine Nursing Act of two thousand two, Senator Laxon.
To the Committees on Civil Service, Government Organization and Professional Regulation, Health and Demography and Finance.
Senate Number four hundred, enac instituting a national land use policy providing the implementing mechanisms therefore and for other purposes, Senator Laxon.
To the Committees on Sustainable Development Goals, Innovation and Future Thinking and Finance. Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, uh, with the permission of the body, I move that we consider Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Five. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved. Secretary is directed to read the title.
Concurrent Resolution, amending the legislative calendar, the first regular session of the twentieth Congress of the Philippines.
Majority leader.
Yes, Mr. President, just for the record, uh, this is in relation to the request of the House of Representatives uh, for additional three days of work. The proposed adjustment, Mr. President, in the calendar is deemed necessary to accommodate the timely transmittal deliberation in approval of the General Appropriations Bill. Mr. President, this is nothing new. We have been, uh, we, we, we have done this before and the changes in the legislative calendar aim to ensure that we will have sufficient time for thorough examination and deliberation on the proposed national budget in accordance with our constitutional duty to enact the annual appropriations law before the start of the next fiscal year. And so with that, Mr. President, I move that we adopt Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Five.
Before acting on the motion of the Majority Floor Leader, just for the record, our House counterparts got in touch with um our um, with um, with Senator Win Gachalian and this representation as well as Senator Joel Villanueva requesting for this change because if we do not change it, according to them, they will be giving us the GAP on November eleven, which will effectively reduce by over a week our time to tackle the budget. However, if we adjust the calendar, they will be able to give it to us according to them on October twenty-four. Although it's um, it's still recess, the Committee on Finance can already process it and when we open, when we resume our sessions, we will be able to begin tackling the budget already in plenary because that will enable the Committee on Finance to come up with this committee report.
Acting on the motion of the Majority Floor Leader, is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved. Majority leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I ask for a minute suspension, Mr. President?
Session is suspended. Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, at this juncture, I move that we consider Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Four. This is the concurrent resolution strengthening the national budget process. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved. Secretary is directed to read the title of the resolution.
Concurrent Resolution, Strengthening the National Budget Process by Adapting and Enforcing Transparency and Accountability Measures to Ensure Public Access to Information and Allow Public Participation in the Deliberations of the Twenty Twenty Six General Appropriations Act.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, to sponsor the measure, I move that we recognize the Chair, Senate Chairperson of the Committee on Finance, Senator Win Gachalian. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Gachalian is recognized to sponsor the measure. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Majority Leader. Mr. President, esteemed colleagues, I rise today to sponsor Concurrent Resolution Number Four, which is our resolution to strengthen the national budget process by adopting and enforcing transparency and accountability measures to ensure public access to information and allow public participation in the deliberations of the Twenty Twenty Six General Appropriations Act. The enactment of the national budget is one of the most critical functions of Congress. It determines how government resources are spent. It is a reflection of our national priorities and direct, directly affects the delivery of basic services to communities and families. This measure could not have come at a more urgent time. In his State of the Nation address, the president took aim at the budget of flood control projects. The president did not hold back. His challenge to those benefiting from corruption, and it was his challenge to all of us, to step up to the plate and do better. Yesterday, the president launched Sumbong Sapangulo dot PH, an online platform designed to give citizens access to information on flood control projects nationwide while allowing any ordinary Filipino to report any irregularities. Mr. President, we at the Senate are firmly committed to accountability and earning the public's trust. This concurrent resolution reflects the Senate's commitment to that mission. Our vision for the Twenty Twenty Six budget is to create a budget that is effective, efficient and lean, which will usher a golden age of transparency and accountability that will open up the budget process and empower the public to understand the budget, increase their participation and root the system of accountability in peoples, in the people themselves. The cornerstone of our, the cornerstone of our concurrent resolution is making, making the, is making public documents which are critical outputs at every step of the budget process such as the General Appropriations Bill, also known as GAP, the committee report and other pertinent documents. The key to operationalizing this is digitization and maximizing the use of technology. At the moment, only two documents are available to the public online, the National Expenditure Program or NEP, which is the first consolidated document in the budget process and the General Appropriations Act, which is the approved budget. It is important that our countrymen see the documents on this process. We propose that the following documents be uploaded to the websites of the Senate and the House of Representatives. Number one, the General Appropriations Bill, passed on third reading by the House of Representatives and transmitted to the Senate. Number two, the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report and Joint Explanation of Disagreeing Votes of the Senate and the House of Representatives. We also urge the Department of Budget, of, of Budget and Management at a later time to upload in its website duly received copies of the Budget Preparation Form two oh one, a budget preparation form used by the Philippine government agencies to submit their budget proposals to the DBM. We further propose that the following documents be uploaded to the website of the House of Representatives. Number one, transcript, transcripts of House budgeting, House budget briefings, public hearings and technical working group meetings. Number two, the Committee on Appropriations Report on the GAP. And number three, journal records of the Senate Plenary, uh, uh, Journal of the Senate, Journals of the House Plenary Deliberations. Thirdly, this resolution proposes that the following documents be uploaded to the website of the Senate. Number one, transcript of Senate budget briefings, public hearings and technical working group meetings. Number two, Committee on Finance Report on the GAP. Number three, journal records of the Senate Plenary Deliberations. Number four, GAP passed on third reading by the Senate. These documents contain the transcripts of budget briefings, public hearings and plenary deliberations. Having access to these documents is vital to ensuring that the projects of each government agency are held to public account. In addition to the documents themselves, the resolution proposes that all uploaded documents will be in formats that are timely, comprehensive and machine readable. This saves time and ensures that the analysis of the documents is not compromised by poor document quality. We further propose that the public will be given a platform on the websites of both the Senate and the House of Representatives to communicate their analysis, suggestions and feedbacks on the national budget. Creating a culture of transparency and accountability for the benefit of, benefit of the public is nothing extraordinary. It is our duty as servants of the people. Mr. President, dear colleagues, before I end, I would like to thank, I would like to thank you all for rallying behind this concurrent resolution. We filed this resolution unanimously. This is living, living proof that there is bipartisanship between the majority and the minority when it comes to transparency and accountability. This stands as our collective commitment to honest governance and it is this representation's prayer that the fruits of our labor take root and transform our government. We can face our countrymen proudly and tell them this is where your taxes go. Thank you, Mr. President, esteemed colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Noted and entered into the records, Majority floor leader.
Yes, Mr. President.
What is the pleasure of the Honorable Marcos?
Yes, Mr. President, I just wish to uh, um, observe uh, something on uh, number three, line twenty-six, page three. Is that timely?
Um. Sponsorship.
Okay, all right.
Stage, Mr. President, perhaps we can entertain the questions later on, Mr. President. We have a number of co-sponsors and a number of senators wanting to.
The chair will just dispose. We will act on the observation and or perhaps proposed amendment of the Honorable Marcos at a later time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this representation together with the Senate President, Senators Francis Pangilinan and Lauren Legarda would just like to insert into the records our co-sponsorship speech. Uh, may I put that into the record, Mr. President? Mr. President, next to co-sponsor the measure is our Deputy Majority Leader, Senator JV Ersito. I move that he be recognized, Mr. President.
Senator JV Ersito, our senior Deputy Majority Floor Leader is recognized for his sponsorship. You may proceed, sir.
Mr. President, dear colleagues, good afternoon. I rise today to co-sponsor Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Four, which through the initiative of our Finance Committee Chairperson, Senator Win Gachalian seeks to institutionalize strict transparency and accountability measure in the budget process. The resolution before us has earned the unanimous backing of this body, signifying its historic importance. I'm both honored and proud that on this issue, all twenty-four members of the Senate are speaking in a single unified voice. Ginong pangulo, malugod at buong puso nating sinusuportan ang hakbang na ito. Sabagat ang konstitusyon mismo ang nagtatakda at humikilala sa karapatan ng samayna sa impormasyon uko sa mga bagay at usapin sa pangpublikong interes. Binibigang pugay natin ang layunin ng hakbangin na ito na naglalayong buksan ang proseso ng pagbabalangkas ng ating national budget. Ang tunay na dapat na kumakatawan sa maprayadad at dikain at hangarin bilang isang bansa at hindi kailan man magsibing daluan ng makasariling interes ni numan. Simple lang po ang mensahen na proposisyon at layunin natin. Ang buwis ay pera ng taong bayan. Bilang lingkod bayan ay tungkulin nating tiyakin ang karapatan ng bawat Filipino na malaman kung paano ito ginagamit. Ginagastos at kung aling mga proyekto ang binibigang prayadad ng pamalahan para sa kapakanan ng ating mga kababayan. Ginong pangulo, marail po ay wala ng mas konkretopan na na porma na pakikisa sa ating adikain kundi ang pagsasabatas nito. Kinikilala natin na napapanahon na ang mga para, para isali sa diskusyon at pagbabalangkas ang taonang budget ang ating mga mamamayan. Ngunit mangyari, mangyara, mangyayari lamang ito kung susulat at magpapasatayo ng batas na magpapaintulot sa ating mga kambayan na mapag-aralan at suriin ang pambansang budget ang kaba ng bayan. This presentation filed Senate Bill Number seven seven zero of the People's Freedom of Information Act, which also furthers the aim of this resolution. We included a provision emphasizing on the real-time public access to government proceedings, including all government consultation and deliberations of the executive department in the drafting of limiting rules and regulations in the connection of the enactment of laws, plenary sessions, committee hearings, bi-cameral conference, committee meetings and all public consultations by Congress and public hearings, oral. and public hearings, oral arguments, and other similar proceedings of the Supreme Court, recognized to be opened by its internal rules and jurisprudence. In providing real-time access to our citizens in every step, particularly in our budget deliberations, we will make significant strides in strengthening the right of information of our citizens, which lies at the very heart of democratic governance. Recognize that by making all information with respect to the national budget readily available, easily accessible, and searchable, we open the floor for greater transparency, and by strengthening transparency measures in the budget process, we also reinforce democratic accountability in our government. Furthermore, we acknowledge that civic participation helps make governments more responsive, innovative, and effective. Ang pinakaimportante, ginong Pangulo, ay ang pagbubukas sa publiko ng pagdinig ng Bi-Cameral Conference Committee na matagal na hindi open to the public. Kung wala tayong ginagawang mali, wala tayong dapat itago sa publiko. As public servants, we may always be reminded of the constitutional dictum that "public office is a public trust." We may have been entrusted with a high level of trust from our constituents in the same manner that we owe in them a higher degree of service and return. Kung ang impormasyon ay kapangyarihan tungkulin natin binang mga halal ng kinatawan ng sambaynan na buksan at gibain ang anumang pinto o hadlang na pumipigil sa malamag dahil ito, pagdaloy nito patungo sa taong bayan. Maraming salat po, ginong Pangulo.
Noted and entered into the records, Majority Leader.
Mister President, next to cosponsor the measure is our distinguished Senate President Pro Tem, Senator Jingoy Estrada. I move that he be recognized, Mister President.
Senator Jingoy Estrada, our Senate President Pro Tem, is recognized for his sponsorship speech. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mister President. Mister President, this presentation co-authored Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Four, a measure that seeks to strengthen the process of enacting the national budget through the enforcement of transparency and accountability measures, with the certainty that it is a significant initiative to promote democracy and good governance in our country. With the permission of the principal author and sponsor of the measure, Senator Gatchalian, our Committee on Finance Chairperson, it is an honor to cosponsor Senate Concurrent Resolution Four to manifest my full support for the immediate adoption of the same. Ginong Pangulo, karapatan ng ating mga kababayan na malaman ang madetali at proseso ng pambansang paggoogol ng ating sinasabatas sapagkat sila ang tunay na may kapangyarihan sa ating demokratikong pamamahala at tayo ay pawang mga kinatawan lamang. Bilang mga mamayan, sila ay nagbabayad ng buwis na siya namang ginagamit ng ating pamalan para sa ibat-ibang serbisyo, programa, at proyekto. Bilang kanilang mga kinatawan, tungkulin natin na siguruhin ang tapat, responsable, at makabuluhang paglalaan ng Pondo. Hindi natin makakila na maraming tanong, hakahaka, delegasyon, tungkol sa mali, makasarili at irresponsable ang paglalaan at paggoogol ng Pondo ng pamalan. Subalit kadalasan, makarating lang ito sa atensyon na nakakarami kapag meron ng mga serbisyo na hindi naipaparating sa ating mga mamamayan. Magdepiktibong laptop na nabubunyag o tulay na bumagsak, kahit hindi pa ganap na nagagamit. Because the budget cycle is a long and complicated process involving many entities and personalities in the government, it is undeniably difficult to trace and pinpoint where the misallocation or misuse of fund should be attributed to. It is therefore essential that in the performance of its constitutional duty to exercise the power of the purse, the Congress must observe full transparency and disclosure. Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Four proposes a proactive approach in making the budget process more democratic and participative. This will ensure responsive and responsible allocation of funds and eliminate irregular, unnecessary, excessive, extravagant, and unconscionable spending of public funds. More importantly, we want to prevent unwarranted consequences of misallocation or misuse of funds, such as deprivation of health services of our people, poor quality of education of our students, delay of public services, or loss of lives of innocent persons. Utilizing the innovation and efficiency of technology, this measure seeks to make the budget documents easily accessible to the public and to put in place mechanisms through which they can provide their observations, inputs, and proposals. Sa pamamagitan nito, masusuri mismo ng ating mga kababayan ang mga dokumento ang pinag-uusapan natin sa komite at sa plenario. Indeed, the national budget is not a mere document of numbers and amounts. It is redistribution of representation through participation, making our citizens involved in the process and allowing them to own the resulting appropriations law. It is a vital tool to achieve national development and goals, a scheme to ensure public accountability, an instrument to provide secure and prosperous life to each and every Filipino. This legislative measure is one important instrument to achieve these goals. We urge our colleagues to support its immediate adoption. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, Senator Estrada. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mister President, next to cosponsor the measure is the distinguished gentleman from Davao, Senator Ronald Bamo de la Rosa. I move that he be recognized, Mister President.
Senator de la Rosa is recognized to cosponsor the measure. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mister President. Good afternoon, Mister President, dear colleagues. The Philippines is a democratic and republican state. Sovereignty resides in the people, and all government authority emanates from them. This is the first section of Article Two of the Declaration of Principles and State Policies in our Constitution. Having defined the extent of our territorial jurisdiction, the Constitution then proceeds to state where the power, where the real power lies, and it is with our people. Ang sambayanan po ang nagbigay ng kapangyarihan sa ating pamahalaan. Wala po ang gobyerno kung wala ang mga tao. Walang maluluklok sa kapangyarihan kung walang nagpasya kung sino ang bibigyan nito. Kung nais natin na maging pundasyon ng ating gobyerno, ang trust and confidence ng ating mga kababayan, walang ibang dapat gawin, kundi bahagian sila ng kapangyarihan na sa kanila naman nagmula. Granting our people the right to information is directly involving them in governance. It sends out a clear message that it is their government, or better yet, that they are the government, and that they have the right and responsibility to protect its dignity and integrity at all times. Ang right to information po ay hindi simpleng karapatan na magmasid o makialam, kundi pagaatas ng responsibilidad sa bawat isa na ingatan. Hindi lamang ang kaba ng bayan, kundi ang pamahalaan sa kabuuhan. Giving a more concrete and tangible representation to the praise government of the people, by the people, for the people. Kaya naman, Mister President, nararapat lamang na isulong natin ang resolusyon na ito. Resolusyong nagbibigay ng access sa pagbalangkas ng taonang budget. Nagbibigay rin ito ng aktibong partisipasyon sa mga tunay na may kapangyarihan. Ibinabalik lamang po natin ang kapangyarihan na ibinigay sa atin ng taong bayan. Ang Taonang Budget o General Appropriations Act, ang pinakaimportanting batas nahuhubog ng direksyon ng bansa sa mga susunod na taon. Ito rin ang humuhubog na magiging estado ng buhay ng mga Filipino sa araw-araw. Maraming salamat, Ginong Pangulo.
Thank you, Senator de la Rosa. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mister President, next to cosponsor the measure is the gentleman from Tarlac, Senator Bam Akino. I move that he be recognized, Mister President.
Senator Bam Akino is recognized to deliver his cosponsorship speech. You may proceed, sir.
Maraming salamat, Mister President. I'm very happy to cosponsor Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Four, titled "Strengthening the National Budget Process by Adopting and Enforcing Transparency and Accountability Measures to Ensure Public Access to Information and Allow Public Participation in the Deliberations of the 2026 General Appropriations Act." Let me also commend our Chairman of Finance, Senator Win Gatchalian, for this initiative. And I know that this measure will truly usher in the golden age of transparency which we all wish to have here in the Senate. Mister President, matagal na komplikado ang budget process ng ating gobyerno. At kada taon, nananawagan ang ating kababayan na nagahanap ng paraan para makilahok sa proseso. Mister President, the General Appropriations Act, or the GAAP, is one of the most, if not the most, important legislation that we deliberate on. Ang GAAP ang pinangagalinga ng Pondo para sa mga programang pangpubliko. At dito tayo kumukuha ng Pondo para mapanatiling tumatakbo ang ating gobyerno. Ang concurrent resolution na ito ay importante para pasimplihin ang budget process. Nagbibigay daan sa pag-access, higit na pag-unawa, at higit na pakikipagtulungan mula sa executive hanggang sa legislative at kasama ang mga NGO at civil society groups na mahalaga sa pagpapalakas ng ating demokrasya. Bawat piso, alam ng tao. Ang budget na para sa taong bayan dapat maging bukas at transparent upang masigurong nilalaan ng tama para sa mga tamang programa at naaramdaman na mga tamang taong nahangailangan sa ating bayan. Kapag kasama sa proseso ang tao, mas maibabalik ang tiwala sa gobyerno. Sa ngayon po, hindi naintindihan na nakararami ang mga budget documents. At dahil dito, nahihirapan din tayo sa paggawa ng mga programa at mga batas na nakakatulong sa taong bayan. The complicated nature of the budget has also made it difficult to monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of public programs. Kanina lang po, sa aming hearing, nakita na malaki ang agwat ng presyo ng DPWH pagdating sa mga classroom at ng mga pribadong NGO o grupo at mga local government units. And of course, napag-uusapan din natin ang bilyong-bilyong na kalaan sa flood control. Ang Pondo dapat diretso sa proyekto para sa taong bayan at hindi sa bulsa ni numan. That is why, together with my colleagues, I fully support this move that empowers the public to participate in the deliberations of the 2026 GAA. Not only do we encourage public participation, but we also call on all government agencies and offices involved in the budget preparation to make all official documents easy to understand and accessible to the public. Kailangan nating magtulungan, mula Sinado hanggang Camera, mula Malacanyang hanggang sa bawat sulok ng ating bansa. Kailangan nating magkaisa para sigurado na ang budget na inilaan sa 2026 ay tunay na para sa lahat ng Filipino at para sa ating bayan. Isa po ang inaasahan nating lahat: ang pera ng bayan para sa bayan. Thank you very much, Mister President, and again, we commend the initiative of Senator Gatchalian for this measure. Salamat.
Thank you, Senator Akina. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mister President, next to cosponsor is the distinguished gentleman from the great province of Palawan, Senator Erwin Tulfo. I move that he be recognized, Mister President.
Senator Erwin Tulfo is recognized to cosponsor the measure. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mister President. Mister President, esteemed colleagues, today I rise to cosponsor a measure that goes to the very heart of good governance: concurrent resolution strengthening the national budget process by adopting and enforcing transparency and accountability, measures to ensure public access to information and allow public participation in the deliberation of the 2026 General Appropriations Act. Ito po ang inaantay ng mga kababayan natin na sila ay maaring makialam, makinig, at ikanga may pakialam. Dahil after all, ginong Pangulo, pera din namang po nila ito. Wala pong iniwan ito sa isang tao na kapag naglabas ng pera mula sa kanyang bulsa, dapat alam niya kung saan napupunta ang pera niya. The budget is more than just a mere document of revenues and expenditure. It is a reflection of our priorities, commitment, and our values. Malinaw po ang directive ng ating Pangulong Marcos. First, alignment with administration priorities. Second, shovel implementation readiness. Third, agency absorptive capacity. And fourth, available fiscal space. And lastly, prioritization, straight ranking of budget proposals. May sasakatuparan lamang natin ito if we lead an advancing fiscal transparency and ensuring that citizens are empowered to monitor how public funds are planned, allocated, and spent. Tulad po ng nabanggit ko po kanina, ginong Pangulo, karapatan po nilang malaman kung saan napupunta ang kanilang budget kung ito po ba ay ginagastos ng tama. Dahil hindi namang po ito budget ng mga bambabatas, kundi budget po ito ng mga kababayan natin. Sinusuportahan ko na makaroon ng digital access sa mga dokumento patungkol sa ating 2026 budget. This measure seeks to mandate open, accessible, and comprehensible budget data and allow greater public participation in the deliberation of the 2026 General Appropriations Act. Transparency, Mister President, strengthens governance. My dear colleagues, passing this measure is not merely a procedural improvement. It is a declaration of our democracy. The people have the right to know, and we have the duty to inform them. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, Senator Erwin Tulfo. Majority Leader.
Mister President, next to cosponsor the measure is the gentleman from Isabela, Senator Rafi Tulfo. I move that he be recognized, Mister President.
Senator Rafi Tulfo is recognized to cosponsor the measure. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mister President. Bilang kawin ng bayan, isa sa pinakamahalagang bahagi ng ating saligang batas ay ang artikulo tungkol sa pananagutan ng mga public officers. Let me quote: "Public office is a public trust." Alam na po natin lahat 'yan. "Public officers and employees must at all times be accountable to the people." Kailangan pangangalagaan natin ang tiwala ng taong bayan at dapat handa tayong managot sa kanila sa lahat ng ginagawa po natin. Mister President, ang mga budget documents po tulad ng National Expenditure Program, or NEP, ay pinapublish ng DBM. Ang committee budget hearings sa House at dito sa Senate naman ay lahat mapapanood sa internet at kinocovert ng media. Gayon din ang plenary deliberations, napapanood din po ng publiko. Bakit natin ginagawa ito? Dahil gusto natin makita ng publiko na pinahalagaan natin ang transparency at accountability sa mga desisyon tungkol sa pagkakagastusan ng kaba ng bayan. Kaya namad po, walang dahilan bakit sa dulo ng napakatransparent na budget process ay magiging malihim tayo.
The power of the purse is not a power meant to benefit those who hold that power. Rather, it is a power granted to the legislative because we have the mandate of the people. The people voted, every representative in the House and every senator, because they believe we will promote their welfare and protect their interests wherever we prepare the budget and enact laws. That is why I fully support this resolution. Handa po ako at ang buong Sinado na managot sa taong bayan. Maraming salamat po, Mister President.
Thank you, Senator Tulfo. Majority Leader.
Mister President, next to cosponsor the measure is the gentleman from Camarines Norte, Senator Robin Hood Padilla. I move that he be recognized, Mister President.
Senator Robin Hood Padilla is recognized to cosponsor the measure. You may proceed, sir.
Maraming salamat po, ginong Pangulo at sa ating pong pinunong mayura. Asalamualaikum, rahmatullah, wabaraka'to. Mga mahal kong kasama, karangalan kong tumindig bilang kapwa may akda at sponsor ng Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Four. Kinikilala ko si Senator Win Gatchalian, my Einstein. At tayong lahat na pumirma, patunay ng pagkakaisa para sa isang malinaw, tapat, at may pananagutang budget process para sa 2026 GAAP. Ayon sa saligang batas, tungkulin ng estado ang full public disclosure at karapatan ng mamayan ang impormasyon. Kapangyarihan naman ng kongreso ang budget. Kaya't ang ilantad sa publiko, ang bawat piso at pahina ay karapatan ng taong bayan. Kaya't mga kasama, gusto ko pong ipaalala noon palang ika labing siam ng kongreso ay pinapaalala ko na ang kapangyarihan ng public information. Napakahalaga po nito. Ito na po siguro ang pinakamahalaga. Kaya't ako po ay suportado ko na ang hakbang na i-upload sa website ng Sinado at Camera ang lahat ng dokumento ng budget. Oras tama, kompleto, at madaling mahanap. Buksan ang mga pagdinig at ulat at magbigay ng plataforma para sa boses ng mga mamayan. Transparency ay aksyon, hindi drama. Proteksyon nito sa Pondo ng Tao. Panahon na para gawing pamantayan ang liwanag mula sa budget call hanggang firma ng Pangulo. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Senator Robin Hood Padilla. Majority Leader.
Mister President, next to cosponsor the measure is our distinguished Deputy Minority Leader, Senator Lauren Legarda. Oh, sorry. The distinguished lady from Antiques, Senator Lauren Legarda. I move that she be recognized, Mister President.
Senator Legarda is recognized to cosponsor the measure. You may proceed, ma'am.
Thank you. It was in 1998 when I was a member of the minority. But I'm not a deputy minority leader. I'm a mere member of the minority.
I stand corrected, Your Honor, Mister President.
Yes. Thank you. Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. But even if I'm a member of the minority, I support this, especially as it is chaired by distinguished colleague Senator Gachalian. I hope that he will accept my amendment later. I rise today in support of this concurrent resolution which seeks to make the 2026 General Appropriations Act truly reflective of the people's will by ensuring public access to budget-related documents that promote transparency. The Senate's work to make our budget process more transparent and accountable should not end with this concurrent resolution alone. This is not a panasea to the deeper problems that have long affected the way we craft and approve our national budget. It is a step forward, but one that must be followed through with further and more strategic reforms. As such, I wish to highlight key issues that must be addressed along with existing measures aimed at meeting the call for a more effective budget process. First, this concurrent resolution complements transparency measures proposed by Senate Joint Resolution Number One, filed by the members of the Senate Minority Block, which seeks to open all bicameral conference committee deliberations to the public. This reform would close a significant gap that the concurrent resolution, important as it is, cannot by itself resolve. For too-long key stages of the national budget process, especially the bicameral conference committee deliberations, have taken place out of public view. This has created perceptions, and at times, the reality of last-minute changes and decisions made without plenary scrutiny or interpolation. As a result, the budget is often viewed as being shaped by limited decision-makers rather than thorough, open, and inclusive deliberations. As such, livestream access, the publication of a matrix comparing House and Senate versions, and the release of comprehensive minutes should be standard operating procedures. These measures will help dismantle the culture of secrecy that has too often surrounded the bicameral process and restore fidelity to the Constitution's mandate of transparency and accountability. Transparency, however, must be matched with participation. That is why I also draw attention to the proposed people's participation in the National Budget Process Act filed by Senators Luxon and Disrepresentation. This measure institutionalizes the role of civil society organizations in the preparation and authorization of the national budget. It guarantees at least 30% representation for marginalized sectors, ensures access to agency performance data, and allows CSOs to provide policy critics. These safeguards will give communities, especially those most affected by government spending, an active voice in how public funds are planned and allocated. Openness and participation are not enough if we continue to measure success only by pesos spent or projects completed, rather than by the real and lasting changes they create. Every budget season, agencies face one simple but fundamental question: How did your initiatives improve the lives of the Filipino people? Filipinos deserve to know not just what was delivered, but what changed because it was done. Yet the answers we often hear, families reached, roads paved, beneficiaries enrolled, speak only of outputs, not outcomes. They tell us about activity, not impact. Did free Wi-Fi in schools improve student learning? Did livelihood training translate to sustained income? Did new rural clinics lower maternal deaths or expand access to treatment? Too often, these questions are neither asked at the start or measured along the way, nor answered at the end. Without credible evidence, accomplishments become echoes of effort rather than the proof of change. So the gap lies not in intent, but in the absence of a results-based system that tracks, measures, and applies lessons. For decades, the lack of a systematic, integrated monitoring and evaluation framework has hampered our ability to assess effectiveness. Reports rely on outputs, evaluations are inconsistent or unused, and findings rarely feed back into policy and budgeting. Funds are spent without a feedback loop for improvement. This matter cannot be overlooked anymore, and that is a reason why I've filed the National Results-Based Governance Act in this Congress. Your Honor, speak of the 30% to 60% loss to corruption, wastage, and substandard work in our flood control infrastructure. Now imagine if, instead of losing that much, we embedded a 3% allocation for results-based monitoring and evaluation in every project. Though small, this could safeguard projects, ensure real impact, and prevent far greater losses to the public purse. Measurement, however, depends on the availability of reliable data, which is why I also filed the Open Government Data Act. This measure seeks to embed knowledge, management, and transparency into the routine work of government, moving beyond the system that reacts only to requests for information or data. The need for this measure is clear to me because I've seen time and again how uneven and elusive government data can be. I recall a heated budget hearing where sectoral data suddenly became available upon request, complete with charts and reports. This was in stark contrast to ordinary days when agencies would claim that such information was unavailable, confidential, or buried in the bureaucracy. In my four Senate terms since 1998, including the several years as Finance Chair, we have witnessed this pattern repeatedly. Data emerges when budgets are on the line, but vanishes when it is most needed to shape policy, to inform the public, guide investments, or engage citizens. Under the proposed Open Government Data Act, agencies must consistently, periodically publish high-impact data sets in open, machine-readable formats, establish a central, open data portal, and maintain a registry of withheld data to ensure accountability even when disclosure is lawfully restricted. This is a clear departure from the present system where agencies often keep documents behind procedural barriers within the Freedom of Information process has institutionalized a form of red tape that hinders public access. Sa ganito mga paraan, ang mga detalye ng programa, proyekto, at mahalagang impormasyon ay maari nating kilatasin, kilatisin, at suriin ng lahat ng hindi na kailangan mangulit, manghingi, maghintay pa ng mabagal at malabong tugon mula sa ibang ahensya. Taken together, these measures and the concurrent resolution before us will transform our budget process from a closed-door negotiation into a public exercise in democratic governance. Mr. President, it is time to take decisive steps towards greater openness in the budget process. Let us pass this concurrent resolution and ensure that complementary reforms are advanced so that transparency, participation, and accountability become the foundations of how we spend. A budget made in full public view, supported with results-based and open government data, will always advance the people's interest. The veil surrounding the budget process must be lifted, allowing every peso to be accounted for, observed, examined by the people. Salamat po.
Thank you, Senator Legarda. Noted that entered into the records, majority floor leader.
Mr. President, next to co-sponsor the measure is the distinguished gentleman from the province of Davao, no other than Senator Christopher Bongo. I move that he be recognized, Mr. President.
Senator Go is recognized for his co-sponsorship speech. You may proceed, sir.
Mr. President, I rise to co-sponsor the concurrent resolution to strengthen the national budget process by adopting and enforcing transparency and accountability measures to ensure public access to information and allow public participation in the deliberations of the national budget. Mr. President, I applaud this initiative led by Senate President Chies Escudero and our chairman of the Committee on Finance, Senator Win Gachalian. As you know, Mr. President, I had reservations on the BICAM report for the 2025 budget. In fact, I did not sign the BICAM report. Particularly, I am saddened by the zero budget given to Phil Health. While we acknowledge that Phil Health has still billions in reserve funds, as discovered and discussed in five hearings conducted by the Committee on Health last Congress, subsidy from the national government may still be needed to implement necessary reforms and improvements in its benefit packages. Kun meron man pong nabawa sa health, eh dapat po sa health ito mapunta. It has been my call for a participative budget process. Dapat talaga involve ang ating mga kababayan sa bawat proseso. Pero po ng taong bayan ang pinag-uusapan natin kaya dapat alam nila at may partisipasyon sila sa proseso. Bawat piso ay mahalaga sa bawat Pilipino. This is in line with Section 28, Article 2 of the 1987 Constitution, which declares that the state adopts and implements a policy of full public disclosure of all its transactions involving public interest. Section 7, Article 3 of the Constitution provides that the right of the people to information on matters of public concern shall be recognized. It is for these reasons that I support this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Go. Majority floor leader.
Sir President, last but not the least, to co-sponsor the measure is the distinguished lady from Tagig and Pateros, no other than Senator Pia Kayetano. I move that she be recognized, Mr. President.
Senator Pia Kayetano is recognized to co-sponsor the measure. You may proceed, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. President, I rise today to co-sponsor Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 4, which seeks to institutionalize greater transparency and accountability in our national budget process. The General Appropriation Act is one of the most important legislation that Congress annually passes. It reflects our priorities as a nation and the kind of future we envision for our people. I have been the vice-chairman of the Committee on Finance, handling the budget of education for six years and the budget of health for five years. All of these debates have been open to the public, livestreamed, and accessible to all. But in the final stages, the BICAM, it has not been treated the same way. And even I, as vice-chairman of the Committee on Finance, only learned after the fact that the budget I proposed and approved by the Senate is changed in the BICAM. By mandating the timely and transparent release of budget documents, we are removing barriers and encouraging genuine public participation. An open budget process compels us, as legislators and government alike, to act with greater diligence, fairness, and integrity. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Pia Kayetano. Majority floor leader.
Yes, Mr. President. First to interpolate the measure, Mr. President, is our distinguished minority leader, Senator Tito Soto. I move that he be recognized, Mr. President.
Senator Soto is recognized for his interpolation interjection. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the distinguished sponsor, or any of the numerous sponsors, answer some questions for clarification for the benefit of all? Some points of the intent of the resolution? And just for the record, at the outset, I would like to place on record that this is indeed a very commendable resolution. As a matter of fact, I signed it, but I signed it to amend because I will be proposing amendments later when it comes to the period of amendments. So will the distinguished sponsor from the city of Venezuela favor us with some answers, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President, I would be more than... It's an honor for me to receive questions from our minority leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your Honor. It is actually good to have an outward push by the Senate to include the public and give them a platform on the website to communicate, analyze, suggest, and give timely feedback. Now, I wonder what measures would be put in place so that it would not be abused by state or non-state actors? What would be the vetting process for the review of the feedback from the public?
Mr. President, the reason why we included Number 5, and let me just read. The public shall be given a platform on websites, on the websites of both the Senate and the House of Representatives, to communicate their analysis, suggestions, and feedback on the national budget. So the concept here is we're completing the entire cycle, Mr. President. So with this resolution, we are now publishing information that will help the public analyze the budget, hopefully make suggestions, even criticisms if they feel that it should be criticized. But the basic concept here is information that will help them process and analyze the budget will be made available to them in readable format. Hindi lang 'yung picture. And to complete the cycle, it will now... They should have this mechanism to send us their analysis.
Feedback.
Feedback. And this is through electronic form, which is the website, Mr. President. Of course, Mr. President, I appreciate the question of the minority leader that all of these feedbacks and questions and suggestions should be processed very carefully because it might come from sources that are not credible or sources that are not... Maybe they are not equipped in analyzing the budget. So since this will be reviewed by the Senate, we will be very careful in analyzing the feedbacks that we are going to get, Mr. President. So in other words, we will not just take it hook, line, and sinker. We will definitely analyze the feedbacks that we will be getting. So we welcome feedbacks, but the feedback should also be credible and in line with the budget process, Mr. President.
Yes, so that there will be a vetting process on the feedback.
Yes, Mr. President. Internally, since this will be through our email system, so... And this will not be published for data privacy purposes. So in other words, the receiver, which is the Senate, will vet the feedbacks that we will be getting. We will process and vet that very carefully, Mr. President.
I like that phrase, "very carefully", because I would like to be assured that no foreign entities or militant organizations will use the published information in a manner that might compromise our national security. So we would like to take that assurance from the sponsor.
Yes, Mr. President. We would... The Senate, through the Budget Office, the LBRMO, will be very careful also in terms of national security information, Mr. President. So we will also consult with them. If there are items in the budget that are deemed harmful to our national security, then we will also be very careful in publishing that. We will also consult with the executive regarding what items are those. As a rule, Mr. President, we want to publish all the budget items, but if there are national security concerns in those information, then we will be very careful in publishing those in our website.
All right. How about those who would want to participate but do not have easy access to Wi-Fi, smartphone, or a personal computer? Are there any other steps that would allow the public to participate without any form of technology? We can come up with more inclusive mechanism to allow them to have access?
Well, Mr. President...
Offline, offline?
I'm sure you know that these materials are voluminous. Ang kakapalho nila, like for example, the NEP is already 400 pages per volume, Mr. President. And we're talking about four volumes. The gap is also the same, about 400 to 500 pages per volume. So making them available physically is possible, but not widely available. So for example, if you are living, let's say, in Visayas or Mindanao, it would be very... Almost impossible to make those physical books available in those areas. So the most practical is to make them available online, in digital form, so that they can take a look at it anytime they want, they can download it. And most importantly, Mr. President, it's readable. Because when we were looking at the websites of different agencies, sinasabi nila, "it's uploaded", pero hindi mo namamabasa, Mr. President, because the scanning... The technology they use is very low in resolution and you cannot search the item. So in this resolution, we will make sure, or the resolution calls for a readable format so that the public will have easy, convenient, and easy way to look at the information, Mr. President.
Well, you mentioned, yes... Well, you mentioned, yes, indeed, volume, no? And then it should be readable. But these documents are technical and ordinary Filipinos might not understand, no? So there are complexities to the contents. Now, in order to achieve full transparency, they should not only be readily available but also understandable to everyone intending to view them. So how can the ordinary Juan in Juanas de la Cruz understand the process?
That's a very good question, Mr. President. Indeed, the ordinary Juan de la Cruz will have a very difficult time to understand the contents of the budget, Mr. President. Indeed, to be honest, it took me a while to understand the contents of the NEP, the GAAP, and the other materials. Other than that, I have to read many materials. For example, the Admin Code on Budgeting. I have to read that so that I will understand the process and the terminologies. So, Mr. President, I was thinking maybe the second step is to... I was analyzing the NEP. I don't know... And this, I would need a lot of suggestions from our colleagues. So how to probably reform the NEP itself to make it understandable? For example, make it in tabular form, include graphs in the NEP itself, also in the GAAP. So make it a layman format, Mr. President. But I was thinking of that as a secondary step, Mr. President. So the first step is to upload it. The second is reform how we present the information so that when you open the book, you can easily absorb the contents of the book, Mr. President. Right now, admittedly, it's very technical.
So we do not expect that to happen in this budget?
Well, Mr. President, what I am expecting is a lot of the budget experts. There are a lot of budget experts, economists, the academe. And these people are well-versed in the budget process and they can also learn faster than an ordinary person. So I expect that these individuals will be interested to look at the budget and we hope that they will also analyze the budget together when we are analyzing the budget. So in the immediate... When we do this, Mr. President, I expect that experts will be engaged. The next challenge, maybe the next step, will be how do you engage ordinary Filipinos through an understandable, layman format of the NEP and the GAAP, Mr. President?
We will hold on to that.
Mr. President, I was also flagged that when the DBM transmit to us the NEP, they also transmit what they call the People's Budget Version. But typically, these are summary of the budget. My economic cluster, my social services cluster, and it's summarized. But of course, as we all know, the devil is in the details. And when you go into the details, that's where the NEP comes in, and it gets very technical. Alam naman natin yun, my expense class, my cost structure. And it gets really quite confusing if you don't know the terminologies and how it's divided and computed.
All right, yes.
And, Mr. President, I was also flagged by our technical staff that the People's Budget... The NEP and the GAA, together with the summary, is also translated into our major dialects like Ilonggo, Ilocano, Visaya. So there's a friendlier version of the NEP being published by the DBM, Mr. President. But admittedly, it's a summary. It's not the book itself.
Yes. Is it readily available?
Yes, Mr. President, it's on the website of the DBM.
All right. May I call your attention to page 4 of the resolution? Page 4, number 9. Letter C. Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report. It is under General Appropriations Number 1. The following documents, including all annexes and attachments, as may be applicable, shall be uploaded to both the websites of the Senate and the House of Representatives. A, BP201 forms, et cetera, et cetera. B, GAAP passed on third reading by the House, transmitted to the Senate, all good. C, Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report. Just the report. How about how it is done? Ah, di ba? The devil is in how it is done.
Well, Mr. President, the concept that we are applying through this resolution is along the way, Mr. President. The public will now have the ability to follow because the information is already uploaded to the website. So they can follow the changes in the GAAP. They can even follow the changes in the Senate Committee Report. They can even follow the changes in the Senate Third Reading Version.
And how it is being done?
Yes.
Correct?
So pagpasok nila, Mr. President, sa Bi-Cameral Conference Committee, they already have a view of the disagreeing provisions between the House and the Senate. So that's what's important. Actually, Mr. President, what's important here is the information prior to the actual Bi-Cameral Conference Committee. Para masusunda nila, if ever there are, once again, changes in the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee, masusunda nila in changes because they have the information prior to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee.
Okay.
So that's...
I will wait for the period of amendments and I will push... I will propose an amendment to that effect, no?
Yes, Mr. President.
Let me just finish off with one or two more points. Just to clarify, does this resolution include agencies whose budget does not come from the GAA? Like income generating agencies but whose funds are nonetheless public? But... If we're talking of transparency, di ba? Dapat kasama 'yung mga kinikita nila, katulad ng GAAP.
Pagcor.
Games and Abuse Movement Board, Pagcor.
PCSO.
PCSO, MTRCB, Supreme Court.
No, Mr. President, since there...
Billion yun sa Supreme Court.
I agree, Mr. President. Mr. President, those GOCs that you mentioned, they don't come to the Senate, to Congress, both Houses, to authorize their budget, Mr. President. Since they are... They have a corporate-like body, Mr. President. It's their own board that approves their budget and their expenditures, Mr. President. So it does not include the GOCs, Mr. President.
But they appear during budget...
Only certain...
Because of their budget, no?
Only certain GOCs, like PNOC, Mr. President, NEA, National Electrification Authority. But the other GOCs, especially the ones created by the SEC, they don't come to the Senate, Mr. President, like Pagcor. Di naman who sila pumupunta dito.
So you're saying that in the GAA, whether it's transparency or not, the GAA-like incoming generating agencies whose funds are nonetheless public are not included in this transparency proposal of ours?
Well, Mr. President, because their budget is not being appropriated by Congress and we're not authorizing their expenditures. So they don't come here, Mr. President. So they are being audited by COA, nevertheless. But they don't come to Congress to get their authorization on their budget. Only certain, Mr. President, like National Electrification Authority, which is a GOC that comes here and requests for their budget. So we will publish their budget request, Mr. President.
Is there no chance for us to say that even though they do not pass through the GAA, but still those are public funds?
That's a very good suggestion, Mr. President.
Dapat sila... They should be encouraged to follow the lead of the House of Representatives and the Senate in being transparent in the use of public funds.
But, Mr. President, I totally agree with our good minority leader because even though they are a corporate-like entity that has their own board and they approve their own budget, nevertheless, in the spirit of transparency, those entities should also publish their important financial records, Mr. President. I believe that because the national government is implementing what they call the Transparency Seal. If you go to the website, Mr. President, my Transparency Seal, they upload all of the important financial documents so that the public can look at those financial documents. I believe that all government entities, including GOCs like Pagcor or PCSO, they're required to upload through the Transparency Seal, Mr. President. But we will take your suggestion seriously, Mr. President, and see how we can come up with a bill that will require these agencies also to at least send information to the Senate, no?
In that case, can I count on your support when we tackle the FOI bill?
Yes, Mr. President. I am one of those who believe in that measure, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you very much then. Just one final question. Will there be any penalties for agencies that fail to comply or are delayed in their compliance?
Well, Mr. President, since this will be... The coverage of this bill is the Senate and the House of Representatives, Mr. President. So we have our own administrative mechanism to penalize those who do not follow this resolution, Mr. President. Admittedly, Mr. President, after approving this resolution, it is now the offices of our respective Congresses that will operationalize this resolution. For example, Mr. President, the LBRMO will be part of this operationalization. The Bills and Index, the IT Office of our Senate will be part of this because they'll be the ones digitalizing the information, uploading the information. So all of these offices now will be mandated after approval of this resolution, Mr. President.
But your answer is a polite no?
Well, Mr. President, pag may hindi sumunod dito sa atin, meron naman tayong administrative mechanism. Pwede naman silang mamemohan o ma-suspend or ma-penalize, Mr. President. What's important now is there's a legal basis for these offices to follow. Yun ang importante.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to our minority leader.
Thank you, gentlemen from the city of Venezuela. I look forward to the period of amendments. I will propose an amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President. We welcome the amendments, Mr. President, so that we will have a complete and holistic measure, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, minority leader.
Mr. President, next to interpolate is the distinguished gentleman from the great province of Cavite, no other than Senator Panpilo Ping Lakson. I move that he be recognized, Mr. President.
Senator Ping Lakson, recognized to interpolate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the good sponsor of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 4, the distinguished gentleman from Venezuela, yield to just a couple of questions, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President, I would be... Again, it's an honor to receive questions from, I call Senator Ping the budget hawk of the Senate. Talagang hawk-like kin kanyang pagmo-monitor ng budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. My first question is, what is the legal effect of a concurrent resolution as compared to a law passed by Congress?
Well, Mr. President, the concurrent resolution will bind both Houses, Mr. President. It's true that the law can also bind both Houses, but in this case, since this is a resolution, it's expressing as well as binding both Houses in the recommendations that are laid forth in this resolution, Mr. President.
And the legal effect of a law passed by Congress is?
Well, the legal effect of the law is...
It binds even the public. It's binding on the public as well as the Houses of Congress.
Correct, Mr. President. In this case, it's only both Houses that are bound.
It is more institutionalized. I mean the law.
Yes, Mr. President, correct.
I ask that question because I filed Senate Bill 32.
Yes, Mr. President.
In the 20th Congress. It was referred to your Committee, Committee on Finance, and secondarily, to the Committee on Electoral Reforms and People's Participation.
Correct.
And I hope we can collaborate...
Yes, Mr. President.
To schedule a hearing forthwith...
Yes, Mr. President. You have my guarantee on that measure, Mr. President. I took a look very quickly on that measure and it's a very good measure that empowers the public, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a matter of fact, this is the fifth time that I'm filing this measure. I filed it in the 14th, 15th, 17th, and 18th Congress. Unfortunately, hindi po lumalabas sa committee, walang committee report. So I'm glad that there is now this concurrent resolution being sponsored by unanimously by all the members of this House, of this body. So anyway, my second question is, will the uploading of documents as mentioned on page 4 and enumerated on lines 3 to 26, particularly the written individual amendments submitted by members of the House of Representatives and the Senate to the respective chairpersons, House Committee or the House Committee on Appropriations and the Senate Committee on Finance? Yun po ba eh, kasama rin sa ma-upload ng mga dokumento? Kasi ang practice po natin, even in the House, pasai kan reading pa lang, may bulungan na. Hindi na tatagap sa plenary. Hindi po ba ganyan ang ating nagiging practice? Because it's tuti, dios, I understand. Because if we entertain all individual amendments on the floor, baka hindi tayo matapos. So for exigency, para mapasilitate, ang ginagawa na lamang natin, nagsasabit ng mga individual amendments sa chairman or sa chairperson ng Senate Finance Committee. But ang question ko po is, pati ba yun i-a-upload natin sa website?
But, Mr. President, since the third... Since the Committee Report of the GAAP from the Senate side will be uploaded, we will now see the changes, Mr. President. Makikita natin in two from, two from, Mr. President. So in other words, we will now have the ability to look at the changes on a very granular basis, per PAP, per office, even sub-offices, Mr. President. Makikita na natin yun, Mr. President.
I understand that, Mr. President. Ang problema lang dun is, hindi natin malaman kung sino is sponsor or proponent ng amendments.
But, Mr. President...
If we upload it, then we will be able to identify and we can point back to the proponent or proponents of the amendments. That's my concern. That's why I ask if written submissions of amendments will also be uploaded so we can identify from both Houses, the House and the Senate, sino 'yung naginsert, sino 'yung nagrealign, or sino nagintroduce ng amendment? Para madali makita. Kasi siya ngayon, bulag po tayo lahat eh. Nakita lang natin, bumukol sa isang district. From, say, 200 million, bigla na lang naging 15 billion. And we cannot identify. We cannot point to the district representative simply because 'yung iba nagpa-park. And this is a common practice. We all know that, ano? Particularly 'yung mga party list representatives, wala naman silang distrito. What they're doing is, pakipark nga dyan, pero sa akin yan. So yun po, yun po, kaya gusto ko, uploaded natin with proper identification na mga proponents. So I go back to my previous question. Will it include the written submissions of amendments ng individual members? Particularly individual amendments, Mr. President?
Well, Mr. President, we had a long discussion on that, no? I consulted the technical staff, LBRMO, and some of our experienced technical staff. And the way I understand it, Mr. President, some of the amendments evolve over time. And at the same time, Mr. President, when someone makes an amendment... And at the same time, Mr. President, when someone makes an amendment, for example, nagdagdag sila, Mr. President. Uh, typically, the, it's the chairman that looks for the source para dagdagan yung magbabawas sa iba. And at the same time, uh, the amendments also evolve, like for example, nababawasan or just to have the same effect, it's moved to another P A P or moved to another office. So, in other words, Mr. President, the original amendment that might be, might not be the same with the final product, Mr. President.
Nevertheless, Mr. President, all I want is to trace back to the proponent or proponents, no matter how many proponents there are. If these are amendments to the amendments, then fine, but we have to be able to identify kung sino po yung proponent or proponents ng amendments. Can we do that, Mr. President? Kasi, we are for full transparency. The best or the most genuine transparency is full transparency. Kasi kung hindi rin full transparency, parang nag, parang uh, ano tawag dyan? Ayoko sabihin ng lulukohan, ano? Pero, hindi rin fully transparent eh. It will defeat the purpose, Mr. President. Because what we should uh, know or identify, yung proponent, kasi nandun po yung taguan eh. Pagka hindi ma-identify, back to the proponent or proponents of the amendment or amendments. Ano, kanya-kanya tas singitan na naman dyan, Mr. President.
But, Mr. President, uh, that's why when we were discussing that internally and I was consulting with the technical staff, um, my um, uh, because of that complication, um, my alternative is to make sure that the uh, the third reading, the first, the committee report, Mr. President. Uh, surprisingly, to be honest, I, for mga ordinary bills, to be, Mr. President, mga committee report, ina-upload natin. The third reading version, ina-upload natin. But uh, surprisingly, in the budget, we don't upload the third reading report as well as the committee report. So, there's no way to track the changes. So, in other words, Mr. President, my, when we were analyzing the situation, just to avoid um, uh, complexity in terms of tracking down the documents, we will uh, upload the committee report. And dun sa committee report, nandun na lahat, Mr. President. Um, all the final changes will be there.
But we won't be able to identify the proponent of the amendment. Unlike in a, in an ordinary measure or bill that we tackle, everything is recorded. Everything is tackled on the floor, including individual amendments. Kasi nandyan, may minutes tayo. Ang problema sa budget deliberation, nag-iisang uh, measure, pinaka-importating measure, mas kaya wala na tayong maipasang batas. Ito, must pass talaga ito. Ang problema, hindi nga transparent. Kaya na-involved din yung mga ibang, well, mga ibang uh, congressmen or even senators na magsingit ng kung ano na. Anyway, hindi naman matry sa akin yan eh. That's, that's my concern, Mr. President.
Yeah, I, I get the-
If we want to be transparent, let's be fully transparent.
I, I get the um, I, I, I acknowledge that Senator Ping has been tracking down the budget uh, for a very long time.
Ang hirap na gana, pagka nagre-review, pagka by budget deliberation, hirap na hirap po kami ng staff namin. Pagka naghanap ako sa yung previous uh, year's budget, napakahirap. Pero kung merong record ako, kung kanino nanggaling yung uh, yung amendment, mas madali ho maghanap.
Well, Mr. President, I am thinking kasi of the entire uh, budget process and uh, I'm anticipating, for example, uh, one of the vice-chairmen will recommend. And nakikita ko kasi minsan, ang recommendation, kadalasan recommendation, pataas eh, hindi ho pababa.
Never mind, as long as we identify the proponent, then that's fine with me.
So the, 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 the complication that the, that we see, based on my consultation, is uh, how do we attribute the amendment, the specific amendment, if there are other amendments that will happen to enforce or to operationalize that amendment?
Then let's track them, Mr. President.
Impagkuha ng punto.
Kung ilan yun nag-amend sa amendment at in amend yung amendment, at least we can uh, we can backtrack.
I, I get the point of, Mr. President, it's just the-
It's not, it's not really difficult, Mr. President. If we want to do it, it's not really difficult. Because if we upload all the amendments, even amendments to the amendments to the amendments, hindi ma, hindi mahirap i-upload yun, Mr. President.
Yeah, I, I-
Especially written amendments, ah, hindi yung uh, amendments on the floor.
I get the point of uh-
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, it's um, it's just um, when we were discussing it, actually, we talked about that, to be honest about it, Mr. President. Um, uh, it's just the, how it's-
Tutulong pa ako, Mr. President.
How, how you-
Kung paano natin gagawin.
How you track down the amendments? Kasi minsan, isang amendment, ho, may dalawang modification, tatlong modification, that, that's the complication that I see, Mr. President.
Well, at least we can backtrack and identify kung sino nung modify. Sabi ko nga, amendment to the amendments, and that's allowed.
Yes, correct, Mr. President.
So why, why can't we upload everything?
Sometimes the chairman, in, in this case, the chairman will also amend that amendment, Mr. President.
And then, so be it, let's identify that the chairman also amended the amendment.
Well, uh, take note of the proposal, what's that, Mr. President? It's just how to operationalize it, that's, yun ang naging, ano namin, naging uh-
So it seems that uh, it is not acceptable because uh- Sa period of individual amendments, mukhang isa yan sa mga i-introduce amendment. Eh, kung ngayon pa lang rejected na, baka hindi-
Hindi naman, Mr. President, it's just how, I'm thinking ahead how to operationalize that, Mr. President.
Let's work on it, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President, I'll be more than happy to work with uh, his honor, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. The gentleman from San Juan in Sambales.
Thank you, Senator Lakson, Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President, Mr. President, next to interpolate is the distinguished lady from Ilocos Norte, Senator Amy Marcos. I move that she be recognized, Mr. President.
Senator Amy Marcos, recognized to interpolate.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President, Majority Leader, and uh, if uh, the good sponsor, Senator Gachalian, will allow, um, um, a few uh, observations, please.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, I would like to point out that in the last page of the Concurrent Resolution, page four, specifically number three of the operative clause, it mentions that the Senate shall upload number three A, B, C, and I'd like to highlight D, GAB passed on third reading by the Senate. Just to point out and make it very clear, we are only approving, here in the Senate, the amendments to the General Appropriations Bill. We are the approving body, but we receive it from the House of Representatives, which actually prepares the GAB. The role of the Senate, therefore, is to propose and approve amendments to the GAB, not the original GAB. I uh, just want to be very careful so as not to mislead or confuse the public as to the role of this chamber versus the other chamber. So that uh, perhaps if uh, there is room for amendment, a more precise uh, language would be, uh, in number three A, D, line twenty-six, page four, instead of GAB passed on third reading by the Senate, it should read amendments to the GAB as approved by the Senate on third reading.
Yes, Mr. President.
I propose.
Yes, Mr. President, we acknowledge that uh, the language might not, the language might not be the accurate language to reflect uh, uh, the approval of the Senate, that the Senate is only approving the amendments to the GAB, Mr. President. So we acknowledge that, and at the proper time, Mr. President, we would welcome her honor's uh, amendments, Mr. President.
Yes, uh, thank you, there uh, there being no further amendments from my part or uh, interpolations. Uh, I would also like to lend uh, my concurrence and wholehearted support behind this initiative and uh, concurrent resolution, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Marcos, Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President, last to interpolate is Senator Dante Marcoletta, I move that he be recognized.
Senator Marcoletta is recognized to interpolate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sir President, I hope my friend is still able to accommodate a few questions.
Yes, Mr. President, to my um, idol, my campaign uh, partner in last twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am one of uh, the supporters of this uh, concurrent resolution, Mr. President. Um, but my only concern uh, are the practical issues that might all be the concern of our people, like uh, when we say public access or public participation, how much can we give to our people? Because we might not be able to manage people's expectation. There's so many information that we have itemized in this concurrent resolutions. We have not yet, for example, enacted uh, this Freedom on, uh, Freedom of Information Bill. And of course, there is a twin bill uh, in that uh, the right of reply. We, we may be raising people's expectation unnecessarily by citing the Constitution, people's right to information, uh, especially on the transactions, the illicit transactions, and then we will put that limitation as provided by law. Mr. President, the senators are national representatives, are people. The House of Representatives is comprised of more than three hundred district representatives and party list. They too are elected representatives of our people. In this concurrent resolution, we are admitting, although impliedly, that uh, our mandate of safeguarding the people's uh, money needs people's participation.
Parang, parang hindi kompleto, bat kailangan pa naming tulungan kayo? You were there, you were elected. Baka, hindi po kaya, baka isipin sa atin ang tao yun, Mr. President. Nandyan na nga kayo eh, now you are making a concurrent resolution, it is a ship that you cannot do your job fully. Eh, hindi naman sa ayaw naming tulungan kayo, we are always ready to help you. People are also interested in guarding the people's money. Pero san ba kami talaga makakatulong sa inyo? Pagdating sa, kasi po, ako po bilang, ay isang naging congressman, Mr. President, may access na po ako sa information eh. Like uh, bago po ako mag-graduate sa House, ito pong pinakahuling budget, twenty-twenty-five budget. Mr. President, when we were already uh, on the first day of plenary debates, eh, alam po ninyo, yung unang subject matters sa first day on plenary debates, di po yung general principles eh. Wala pa pong agencies, Mr. President. I, I was uh, about to ask some questions on the parameters set out by our national uh, national economic cluster. Hindi po ako nakapagtanong, uh, Mr. President. Uh, a battalion of my colleagues prevented me from asking questions. So, Mr. President, kung ako po ay, nandun na mismo, gusto ko magtanong man lang ng ilang tanong, hindi pa po ako nakapagtanong eh. Paano kaya po yung mga kababayan natin? How do we assure them? We, we wanted to give them a, a level of expectation, Mr. President. How do we do it? Paano natin sila pagbibigyan ng, yung participation will be heard, it will be recognized, it will be vetted? Kayaya po ng tinatlong ni Senator Soto kanina, intrinsado sa inyo, na talagang, mahalaman talaga, talagang madidinig. Yun po ang gusto ko itanong, Sir President.
Well, well, Mr. President, um, uh, in the, in the resolution, we also required um, that both houses should come up with a feedback mechanism, Mr. President. Kasi nga, you're absolutely correct, um, uh, his honor, that uh, that the information will be out there. Uh, people will be um, encouraged to look at uh, the different details of the uh, of, of our budget, and uh, they will do their own analysis. But they have no way of reaching out to the senators, they have no way of reaching out to their representatives, there is no way for them to send their uh, feedbacks. So that's why in this uh, resolution, we also uh, included a platform uh, through their websites uh, that people can now send their feedbacks, Mr. President. So, it comes full circle. The information is there, but we also receive information. So that is the concept, Mr. President, that we are envisioning.
That will be going back to my original question, Mr. President. Kasi sasabihin sa akin nung public, ano ba yung pwede kong gawin na hindi mo pwedeng gawin, nandyan kayo eh. Nakabantay ka nga dyan eh. Ang gusto kong malaman, sabi niya, Mr. President, yung hindi mo kayang gawin, kami nang gagawa. Yun, yun ang exactly na gusto ko sana malaman, kasi yung tao po naghihintay. Gusto rin nilang tumulong siguro, bakit naman hindi? But what are those things? What are those information that they themselves should access that we cannot do?
Well, Mr. President, um, like for example, um-
Meron ba tayong slide? Yung, yung may X check, may X check? Can you flash it?
Uh, Mr. President, I, I'll, I'll flash a slide, no? And uh, when we were doing the analysis of the process, we found out that only the, the NEP and the J A is publicly available through the website, Mr. President. So if you are, let's say, a budget analyst, no? Uh, you wanna analyze the budget, uh, ito, Mr. President. Uh, only the NEP and the J A is available in the internet. All the rest of the documents in between are not available. So if you want to analyze the budget, especially the movements, uh, it's very difficult for analysts to um, track the movements because those information is not available in their website. So yun ang gagawin natin available, Mr. President. That, that the movement in the budget, especially critical documents, will be uploaded uh, as mandated by the two houses, Mr. President.
And each of the senators of this republic, Mr. President, is in a position to to secure the assistance of a budget analyst?
Not, not necessarily, Mr. President. People expect us to know the basic of um, the budget process and budget analysis. Uh, of course, um, not all of us come from the same background, but uh, the public expects us to know at least the basics, Mr. President.
That is the point, uh, Mr. President. Ako po dahil na yu paita ko, I, I would expect a lot of assistance from my staff. Mga kaibigan po namin na makakatulong sa pag-aanalyze ng budget, importante po kasi ito. So sasabihin sa akin nung mga kabarangay ko, halimbawa, which constitute a small portion of the public? Bakit mo pa kailangan itong mga barangay mo eh? Meron kang mga staff na doon na mag-aanalyze dyan, matutulungan ka. Uh, siguro hindi na kami kailangan, sapagkat kami, napakarami rin naming problema, tsaka mas mas meron kayong uh, paraan, atsaka kayo eh, may mga tao ding kayo na talagang tutulong sa inyo. Parang, parang sa kanila ay kalabisan na. Parang hindi kami masyadong makakatulong dahil sa kayo naman ay merong karanasan, at kung wala naman, ay talagang maraming tutulong din sa inyo para pangtulong-tulungan yung pag-aanalyze ng budget without the people themselves. Except, for example, in other instances like, like the akadem, talaga naman pong nakakatulong yan.
Yes.
At talagang nandyan naman po sila talaga.
Yes.
Not necessarily the general public.
Yes.
Ano po?
Tama, Mr. President, in fact, uh, typically, even here in the Senate, we engage the akadem quite often, uh, especially those who are involved in, let's say, public governance or uh, political science. Partehuyan ng kanilang uh, mga uh, aralin, Mr. President. So, in other words, uh, we can also tap the akadem to help analyze the budget. Uh, the, the budget is um, it's a very complex uh, document, and uh, and dami hong detalye. So if we can engage the akadem to also participate in the analysis and help give us uh, fruitful recommendations that, that will uh, that can form part of our uh, process, Mr. President.
Yun pong twenty-twenty-five budget, Mr. President. Gusto ko po sana ng gawing isang halimbawa ito. Nung uh, matapos po yung uh, ByCam, uh, ako po ay member pa ng House of Representatives, natanggap ko po yung uh, ByCam report. Kung hindi po ako nagkakamali, uh, mga December six po yun, twenty-twenty-five, but about six thirty, six thirty-five in the evening. So napakakapal po yun, siguro. So napakakapal po 'yun, siguro about 400 pages, if I'm not mistaken. I tried my best, na sundan po talaga, pero given the limited time, kasi masyado ng segido po 'yun eh. Ang napagtunan ko na lamang po ng pansin, 'yung pinakahuli, Mr. President, I'm referring to the special provision in the BiCam report. Napansin ko po talaga, there were about 12 or 13 pages containing about 28 blanks. So ang ginawa ko po, Mr. President, ay tumigil, tiningnan ko po, pinagsikapang ko pong hanapin kung merong instruction na nandun nakalagay, like I was expecting that an annex is appended in the report, where the material particulars that will be accomplice to fill up the blanks, the instruction to fill each and every blank in every page. Sana nandun 'yung, for example, on page 22, halimbawa, this is supposed to be the figure that will be that be written, para makaumpis po 'yun. In other words, I, hindi ko po alam kung nagkamali ako, but I was unable to find a particular page signed by the conference or ordering somebody, for example, the administrative staff of the House of Representatives or whoever was assigned to fill up those 28 blanks. Na nandun naman talaga, halimbawa po, and pinirmahan, okay na rin siguro sa akin 'yun, because hindi tayo mawawala, because each blank has been designated with a particular data na ilalagay po sa blank. Wala po eh. So I was asking, nagpunta po ako sa office ng Secretary General. Nagbabakasakali po na makahingi ng, makita 'yung enrolled bill, because sa ating tuntunin, I think even in the Senate, meron pong three or four copies na naiiwan po sa either the Senate or the House of Representatives. Problem is, wala naman akong access. Ito 'yung pinag-uusapan natin eh. Because I need to know sino 'yung nagfill up. Kasi po, nung ito is a bit na sa office of the president in the form of an enrolled bill, apat na po 'yung signatories doon, Mr. President. The Speaker and the Secretary General, the Senate President, and the Senate Secretary. 'Yung blank po sa pinakahuli, ay po ang para sa Pangulo na po, dun na sa pipirpa. So 'yung enrolled bill, kompleto na po 'yung detalye, but it did not tell the whole story as to who filled up and what is supposed to be filled up in all those material particulars. So 'yun pong public access natin, 'yung taong tutulong sa atin, paano po mapiprevent 'yung mga ganong pangyayari?
Well, Mr. President, thank you for that question. In fact, I raised that to our technical team here in the Senate that those things should not happen in the 2026 budget. Not under my watch, Mr. President, that the members will be given blank materials to sign, Mr. President. I reminded them to be very strict in the review. Kung kailangan po, two, three, four times to review the documents before letting the members sign, they should do it, Mr. President. So that's a strong reminder to the technical staff, Mr. President. So I know that, narinig ko rin yan, Mr. President, during the last budget season, Mr. President. I'm not very sure on the details, Mr. President. Personally, I didn't see any blank items, at least sa akin, Mr. President. But since that is an issue that came out, so I reminded our technical staff to be very detailed in scrutinizing the budget materials, Mr. President. Especially the ones we will be signing, Mr. President.
Thank you for your assurance, Mr. President. Kanina po nilapitan ako ni Senator Ping, "pagtulungan natin", sabi niya. Thank you, Mr. President.
Pagtulungan? Tulungan o pagtulungan?
Thank you, Senator Marcoleta.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, without other reservation to interpret, I move to close the period of interrogation.
Any objection? There being none, motion is approved.
I move to open the period of amendments and recognize the sponsor, Senator Gachillan, introduce amendments. And likewise, senators, of course, our minority floor leader and Senator Laxson to follow.
Any objection? There being none, motion is approved. Senator Gachillan?
Yes, Mr. President, a few of our colleagues submitted their amendments, Mr. President, so I will just read them. And then those, our colleagues of ours who wants to propose their amendments can also propose after, Mr. President. So so I'll go ahead, Mr. President, so that it will be an orderly process. On page, on page two, line 17, delete the phrase acronym
Page one, wala. Page one, you don't have any amendments?
Wala, Mr. President. So on page two, line 17, delete the phrase and acronym General Appropriations Act and replace it with General Appropriations Bill, open, close parenthesis, GAB. Assume move, Mr. President.
There any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
Still on page 17?
Page 17?
Sorry, still on line 17. Still on line 17, delete the phrase and acronym General Appropriations Bill and replace it with GAB. Assume move, Mr. President.
Replace it with?
GAB, G-A-B.
Alright. Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
On line 20, delete the acronym GAA and replace it with GAB. Assume move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
Still on line 20, after the word deliberations, insert the phrase number seven, number seven, amendments to the GAB approved on third reading by the Senate, semicolon, and renumber the succeeding phrase accordingly. Assume move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
On line 22, after the word votes, delete the phrase of the Senate and House version and replace it with on the GAB. Assume move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
On line 30, delete the acronym JA and replace it with General Appropriations Act. Assume move, Mr. President.
Line 31? 30?
Line 30.
30?
Line, on line 30.
31, maybe?
31, no? Sorry, Mr. President.
31? Are we on the same frequency?
Sorry, Mr. President, I stand corrected. On line 31, delete the acronym JA and replace it with General Appropriations Act. Assume move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
Ah, okay. These are the amendments from Senator Risa, Mr. President.
Alright.
On page three, on line 28, insert a new whereas clause which shall read as follows. Whereas, to ensure full accountability and public understanding of legislative changes to the national budget, comma, it is imperative to provide a detailed comparative matrix of the General Appropriations Bill as it progresses through the House of Representatives, comma, the Senate, comma, and the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee, comma, highlighting all amendments, semicolon. Assume move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
On line six, delete subparaphrase A.
Same page?
Ah, sorry. On page four, line six, delete subparaphrase A and reletter the subparaphrase accordingly.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
On line 10, subparaphrase C, after the word votes, delete the phrase of the Senate and House version and replace it with on the GAB. Assume move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
On line seven, delete the word passed and replace it with approve. Assume move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
On line 10, after the word votes, delete the phrase of the Senate and House
You just mentioned it earlier. You already approved it.
Ah, mulit na. Okay. Sorry, Mr. President. On la- Okay, ito. On line 10, after the word GAB, delete the period and replace it with a semicolon, end. Assume move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
The following, Mr. President, are amendments from Senator Lauren Legarda. On line 11, insert a new paragraph D, a new subparaphrase D which shall read as follows and reletter accordingly. D, transcripts of the Bi-Cameral Conference Meetings. Transcripts of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Meetings. Assume move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
On line 17, delete the acronym JA and replace it with GAB. Assume move, Mr. President.
G-A-B.
G-A-B.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
On line 24, delete the acronym JA and replace it with GAB, G-A-B.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
On line 26, delete subparaphrase D and replace it with D, amendments to the GAB approved on third reading by the Senate. Assume move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
The following will, the following are amendments from Senator Risa Tiveros, Mr. President. On page, uh, same, page four, ten. On page four, line 27, insert a new paragraph, which shall now be the new paragraph four and renumber the succeeding paragraphs accordingly. Paragraph four shall read as follows. Number four, period, a detailed comparative matrix shall be prepared by the Committee on Finance and Committee on Appropriations and publicly uploaded to the websites of both the Senate and the House of Representatives. To ensure comprehensive understanding and traceability of budget changes, this matrix shall clearly compare the following documents. A, the GAB. B, amendments to the GAB, GAB approved on third reading by the Senate, semicolon, end. C, Bi-Cameral Conference Committee version on the GAB. The matrix shall highlight all additions, deletions, modifications, and reallocations of funds including specific line item changes across all programs, activities, and projects. Assume move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
The following are amendments from Senator Legarda, Mr. President. After line 30, insert a new paragraph and renumber accordingly to read as follows. All Bi-Cameral Conference Committee deliberations shall be accessible to the public via digital live streaming. Assume move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved. Yes, what is the pleasure of the minority leader?
The amendment of Senator Legarda, the proposed amendment of Senator Legarda is practically the same as mine except that there is a difference in the wording. So may I propose this and then we could probably ask the sponsor to incorporate?
Yes, please proceed.
So that the numbered proposal will now read, if accepted. Number five, to afford the public the full transparency and access to the budget process, the Senate and House of Representatives will ensure that digital live streaming is available and readily accessible to the public in all budget deliberations. If that's acceptable to Senator Legarda and to the sponsor, Mr. President.
What does the sponsor say?
Yes, Mr. President, we accept, and with the permission of the Senator Soto, we will merge the two, essentially, it's the same. The direction is the same, to livestream it and to show it on screen. So we will merge the two amendments subject to style, Mr. President.
Is there any objection? There being none, the amendment is approved.
After line 33, insert a new paragraph to read as follows. The DBM is urged to upload to its website all the duly received copies of the Budget Preparation Form 201 submitted by all government agencies. Assume move, Mr. President.
Is that the amendment of Senator Tiveros?
No, this is a committee amendment, yes, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, amendments approved.
Ito.
Wala na?
Ah, wala na. Okay.
Am I suspended, Mr. President?
Suspended. Session suspended.
Mr. President, the deputy minority leader, Senator Tiveros, is seeking the floor. Move that she be recognized. The deputy minority leader is recognized, Senator Tiveros.
Salamat, Mr. President. Just a brief manifestation. I would like to thank the sponsor, Senator Gachalian, for accepting my amendments to this concurrent resolution. We introduced an amendment that would require both chambers of Congress to consolidate the differences between the versions of the budget. Our budget process should be not only accessible, but also comprehensible to the public. These amendments are to ensure full, full transparency and accountability in the budget process. Recent developments involving the alleged misuse of the budget should alert us here in Congress that we should be more vigilant and proactive in protecting our taxpayers' money. Still, we are mindful of the limit of the current expression of the proposed budget reform in the resolution. And we register the need for the Senate Finance Committee to consider and act on reforms on budget execution as a continuing effort to ensure full transparency and accountability of the budget process in line with our oversight power. Mr. President, we have a long way to go. I hope that this concurrent resolution is a starting point for more transparent and inclusive reforms in our budget process. Salamat po, Mr. President, at salamat muli sa good sponsor.
Thank you, Senator Risa. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend consideration of Senate concurrent resolution number four.
Any objection? There being none, amendment, uh, motions approved.
Mr. President, Senator Rafi Tulfo would like to deliver a privileged speech. I move that he be recognized.
Senator Rafi Tulfo is recognized to deliver his privileged speech.
Thank you, Mr. President. Distinguished colleagues, I speak before you today on a matter of personal and collective privilege. No mga unang mga araw ko palang dito sa Senado, binigyan din ko na po sa mga committee hearings at sa plenario, ang kahalagaan ng resibo. Pag sinabi ko pong resibo, hindi po 'yung binibigay ng mga kahera sa mga tindahan pag may binibili ka. Ito po ay 'yung pagkakaroon ng prueba sa mga nangyayari. Halimbawa, kapag ikaw inaakusahan ng isang bagay, itatanong mo, may resibo ka ba? Meaning, may prueba ka ba? Ito ang kailangan natin sa ating mga ahensya sa gobyerno, lalong lang na sa ating mga law enforcement agencies. Ang paulit-ulit kong sinasabi, kailangan natin ng body-worn camera, o BWC, para sa ating mga law enforcers, at karagdagang CCTV sa mga ahensya naalam nating maraming kalokohan ang nangyayari. Bato-bato sa langit, ang tamal wag, wala akong paki kung magagalit. Mr. President, my dear colleagues, parano po akong siramplaka, pero sirap rin po kasi talaga ang ating sistema. Marami pa rin pong nakalating sa akin ng mga incidente ng mga umabusong law enforcers. At gayon din naman, may mga incidente rin na napagbibintangan sila at nagiging biktima ng maling paratang. And all these could have been avoided if there were body-worn cameras or CCTVs. Nagsimula po ang clamor ng pagkakaroon ng body-worn camera para sa ating mga law enforcers noong kasaksagan ng War on Drugs ni Pangulong Duterte. I hope that my speech will not be politicized. Pero meron kasing batuhan ng okusasyon. Sinasabi ng mga tao na umabusong mga pulis at basta na lamang pumapatay. At sinasabi naman ng mga pulis na maakusado ay nanlaban. Sino ang nagsasabi ng totoo? These issues could have been resolved with cold neutrality if the law enforcers had body-worn cameras. But incidents like these are not isolated to the War on Drugs. There are other cases that reach my program where police officers conducted arrests with or without warrant that was not done properly and violated the rights of the accused and sometimes their families. To give life to my privileged speech, let me show actual incidents that has reached my program.
Video? Batol ang ojo. Wait, batol ang ojo. Where is the ojo? Ojo. Ojo. Ano nangyari sa ojo?
Naistan.
Napakilala niyo pa naistan? Asan na yun?
One minute suspension, sir. Mr. President.
Mr. President, meaning suspension.
Session suspended.
Hinahang apusin ang, uh, mga nakam- bilhin ng pulis at kasama na po 'yung inoba. Sasakyan. Wala na man kayong papel eh. Asan ang papel nyo? Maghuhuli kayo? Oh, pumasok ka sa loob ng bahay yan. Yan.
Okay.
Ayan oh, mga pulis. No, mga pulis! Walang papel, walang papel. Naghuhuli. Pinasok ang bahay namin. Walang search warrant. Ayan oh, oh, ayun. Serapi. Mga nangaharang. Oh, sige, tuya po.
Sino po 'yung hinahawakan?
Ayun po, 'yung kapatid ko pong pomboy po. Sinampal po nung pulis po.
Oh, pulis. Alright. Wala pong nahuling hinahanap nila na helmer.
Wala po.
Meron po silang dalang warrant.
Wala po.
Pinakita po. Ayun po 'yung sinasabi ko sa kanila. Kung may dala silang warrant to, Paris. Pwede ko naman po silang papasukin eh.
Nakulong po kayo?
Opo.
Nagpiyansa lang kayo?
Opo.
Gaano katagal kayo nakulong?
San linggo, san araw.
Ano po 'yung kaso? Kinasuan po kami ng direct assault tas disobedience po.
Di, wala pang tama. Wala kami siya talaga. Wala kami. Wala kami.
O, pwede ang bon.
May bata sa araw niya, kakaasakay ng baril niyan. Natodrawa 'yung bata sa inyo.
Ape, sige!
Ang unang kaso po ay mga pulis na may hinahabol at sinasabing hot pursuit ang kanilang operasyon. Pero yun nga, umabuso sila. Sinipang mga pinto at pinasok ang limang bahay. Ang pangalang kaso, ang pangalawang kaso na po ay ganun din. Walang warrant na pumasok ng bahay na hindi nakaiuniform at nakasuot ng bonet ang maoperatiba at sinaktan ang mga residente. Ang pangatlong kaso ay isang pulis na may hinahanap na tao na tinuro lamang sa kanya at nang di niya nakita ang taong hinahanap, ay natake ang ibang bahay. Kung ang mga law enforcers may suot na body-worn camera, hindi siguro basta-basta nangyari ito. At hindi basta-basta sila makapangabuso dahil meron ang sinasabing resibo. Ibig sabihin, merong evidencia. Supportado rin talaga na marami ang paggamit ng body-worn camera at CCTV na sa mga kaso na mabilis na marisolbada sa kuha ng CCTV. In May 2025, a driver's SUV plowed into the departure area of Naia Terminal 1, resulting in two fatalities. Early analysis of CCTV footage confirmed there was no vehicle in front of the SUV, suggesting the crash was unintentional. The video is central to the investigation. In April 2025, two unidentified individuals entered the security guard's duty post along General Avenue in Barangay Toro, Quezon City, and stole the guard's bag containing his service firearm and personal belongings. Police reviewed CCTV footage, which captured the suspects in the area and enables authorities to determine their identities. And in August 2024, a dash cam footage showed an MMDA traffic enforcer literally jumping into the hood of a speeding car to stop, to stop a driver fleeing from the accident in Taguig. The attempted apprehension was filmed and authorities were able to retrieve the vehicle's plate number. The benefits of full implementation of BWCs in law enforcement and the installation of CCTVs has long been adopted by developed Asian countries such as Singapore and Japan. In May 2023, Singapore purchased over 109,000 CCTV and another 90,000 cameras recently with a goal of having a total of 180,000 cameras by 2030. Meanwhile, they also have the full implementation of body-worn cameras to facilitate police investigators and the gathering of evidence. It is part of their technology roadmap to improve the efficiency of policing in Singapore. Meanwhile, in Japan, police officers have long been wearing name card-sized cameras mounted on the chest or side of the head to record their duties and provide evidence in cases of traffic violations and controlled crowd situations. It said, "The National Police Agency aims to introduce the system nationwide after assessing the public reaction and impact on police duties." Here in the Philippines, the use of body-worn cameras as a source of evidence of law enforcement operations has been recognized by our own Supreme Court. On June 29, 2021, Administrative Memorandum Number 21-06-08-SC or the Rules of the Use of Body-Worn Cameras in the Execution of Warrants was triggered by the increasing reports of civilian deaths resulting from the execution of warrants issued by trial courts, the causes and conditions surrounding such deaths being widely disputed. Other government agencies have also seen the wisdom of this practice. One, the Bureau of Customs issued its rule on the use of body-worn cameras in the exercise of customs police authority. Two, the Bureau of Immigration issued their implementing rules and regulations for Bureau of Immigration CCTV cameras. Three, the LTO has the guidelines for the operation, maintenance, and accountability of officially issued body cameras. And to ensure the protection of all parties, the National Privacy Commission issued guidelines on the processing of personal data collected using body-worn cameras. The CICLAR aims to establish protocols for the protection of data subjects, personal data, and their data privacy rights, ensuring accountability in personal data processing activities involving BWCs and ARDs. The PNP has already started buying body-worn cameras and reportedly have 2,696 BWC units distributed to 171 police stations. Due to the limited supply, they said that the distribution prioritizes personnel in police stations and national operational support units, including the CIDG, Drug Enforcement Group, Anti-Kidnapping Group, and Anti-Cybercrime Group. The purchase of more BWCs were criticized the past years for being overpriced. In 2019, the unit's purchase had a budget of 289 million pesos, or 289 million, or about 107,000 per unit, which includes a subscription lot. There were also statements from the PNP that a body-worn camera cost more than 135,000 per unit, since it also covers not just the camera, but also the accompanying program, docking stations, GPS capability, and internet and SIM capability. Also, they claim that the video management software is scalable, providing a secure and comprehensive management of the videos and images taken. Despite the justification of the expensive cost, the PNP was still questioned because the purpose of the BWCs is simple. It is meant to capture, store, and retrieve videos. So as long as it could do all these, it is sufficient. Fortunately, the PNP addressed these concerns because in the August 14, 2023 hearing of the Committee on Public Order, they said that the BWC units they intend to purchase is now only 25,950 per unit. Biglang bubaba, nagmura. And more recently, during the budget hearing in November 2024, they said that the BWC they intend to purchase is only 33,000 per unit. Medyo nagmahal, pero konti lang diperentsa. According to the PNP, they need to purchase around 22,000 more body-worn cameras. Mr. President, the declarations of the PNP regarding the BWC units, its purchase and distribution, has been quite confusing. I hope to support the purchase and full implementation of BWCs and CCTVs, but, there's a but, but we need their cooperation and transparency on the matter. They must provide us with a clear study of how much they need, the specification of the camera, and how it will be distributed. BWCs and CCTVs are very basic solutions, but it is very effective for law enforcement and public accountability. Kasi nga po, nakakaroon tayo ng resibo, and so, in line with this, I've filed three bills this Congress. Senate Bill Number 86, or the Law Enforcement Body-Worn Camera Act, which requires the use of body-worn cameras for law enforcement agents such as the PNP, the NBI, the PIDEA, among others. I also filed Senate Bill Number 439, or the Jails and Prison Monitoring Act of 2025, which provides a safe and secure environment for individuals arrested, detainees, and convicted inmates, and prevents illegal practices in our jails and prisons. Finally, I filed Senate Bill Number 710, or the Barangay CCTV Surveillance Act of 2025. This will institutionalize the installation of security monitoring systems in all barangay posts and strategic public areas to deter crime. Mr. President, time and again, we are reminded that public office is a public trust. While trust in our police force is slowly improving, we could reinforce it by providing tools for accountability because we must always be accountable to the people, serve them with utmost responsibility, integrity, loyalty, and efficiency. Mr. President, I look forward for the support of my colleagues, especially the Chair of the Committee on Public Order and Dangerous Drugs and Other Done, Senator Bato de la Rosa. Again, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Tulfo.
Mr. President, Senator Ronald Bato de la Rosa is seeking the floor. I move that he be recognized.
Senator Bato de la Rosa is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is not an interpellation, but a short manifestation in support to the privileged speech of the gentleman from Isabela and Davao, Senator Rafi Tulfo. In all my years of public service, Mr. President, I have come to realize that someone is always watching. This is echoed especially by the life that I have chosen to lead. First as a soldier, then as a police officer, and then now as a senator of the Republic. And as far as public service is concerned, Mr. President, those who are watching are also often the ones to whom we are unsellable. Of course, this is not meant to scare or threaten. It is, as my- It is, as my experience tells me, merely a matter of fact. That someone is always watching comes hand in hand with public, with the probing question, "Now, what are we doing about it?" It is in cognizance of this that I express my full support for the direction that the good gentleman from Isabela and Davao takes in his privileged speech for our personnel in the Philippine National Police. It would serve them well to always be reminded that there are eyes which though quiet, see their every move. For the same reason, they should exercise due mindfulness in what they are doing. I also wish to state for the record that in the previous Congress, your Senate Committee on Public Order and Dangerous Drugs was able to submit to this plenary Committee Report Number 584, which then contained Senate Bill Number 3005, or the Law Enforcement Body-Worn Camera Act. Under this bill, law enforcement officers are mandated to wear and activate body-worn cameras in the conduct of their law enforcement operations. Hindi rin kaila sa atin na may kaakibat na gastos ang panukalang ito. Kung kaya, nilagay rin natin sa ating proposed bill na kung sakaling hindi available ang body-worn camera, maari sila gumamit ng alternative recording device. Sa tagal ko na sa serbisyo, Mr. President, sa tingin ko ay nasa posisyon na akong sabihin na ang isa sa pinakamahalagang aral na aking natutunan ay ito. Integrity defines the public servant. Of course, doing what is right even when no one is looking is well and good. But the real challenge, Mr. President, is doing the right thing precisely because the rest of the nation is watching. Precisely because it is the whole nation that expects, demands, that you do the right thing. For the 28th Congress, I have filed Senate Bill Number 358 for the same purpose na way sa kasalukuyang Kongreso. Ma-isabatasan natin ito. Rest assured that as your Chairman of the Committee on Public Order and Dangerous Drugs, my commitment remains as strong as my sense of integrity. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the good gentleman from Davao and Isabela, Senator Rafi Tulfo.
Thank you, Senator Bato Delarosa.
Mr. President, next to make a manifestation is Senator Erwin Tulfo. I move that he be recognized.
Senator Erwin Tulfo is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's not a, this is not an interpolation, rather it's a manifestation of support uh, regarding the resolution filed by my brother, the gentleman from Davao and Isabela. Mr. President, supportado ko po ang sinasabi po dun sa resolusyon na panahon na po na bumili ang pamahalaan at bigyang po ng mga body-worn cameras. Hindi lamang po ang mga police, kundi maging ang NBI, ganun din po ang PIDEA. Para po ikanga, para sa proteksyon ng magkabilang grupo, ng mga autoridad at ng mga sibilyan. Kasi po, pagdating ng may mga instances na sinasabing police abuses, ah, pag-aabuso ng mga autoridad, ng mga arresting officers, sasabihin namang po ng kabila, hindi, nagsisinungaling 'yan. So parang he says, she says po 'yan. So nagkakaroon po ng debate sa korte. Eh diyan po, magkakatalo. Doon po, sa mga ibidensya, doon po, sa body-worn cameras, is a protection po both of the authorities and at the same time, protection of the public from abuses. Sana nga po, gusto ko rin po sana dagdagan na rin ng panukala, hindi lamang po sa ating mga autoridad, hindi lamang po sa mga law enforcement, proteksyon na rin po sa ating mga militar, lalo na po sa mga squad level. Yung mga squad leader na lang po, wag na po, dahil sa dami po nila, bawat squad leader po may body-worn cameras para hindi namang po maakusahan na nga tinatawag na ikanga human rights abuses pag sila po ay nag-ooperate sa mga kabundukan o sa mga liblib na lugar para namang po proteksyon din po ng ating mga militar. At para makita din po na pag dumating po sa korte at sila po ay mademandan ng mga individual sa kabundukan, may maipapakita po sila na ginawa po nila ang tamang standard operating procedure sa kanilang operation. Yun lamang po, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Erwin. Any response from the elder brother?
Of course, I'd like to thank Senator Erwin Tulfo, my brother, for the support manifestation. Thank you, Senator Erwin.
This is a curious question, Senator Rafi.
Yes, sir.
How come both of you hail from two different provinces?
Oh, well, my mother is from Davao Oriental and my wife is from Isabela. So I'm adopted son of Isabela and Erwin is, he studied in Palawan. He grew in Palawan, Puerto Prinsesa. Siguro kaya inadap niya 'yung Palawan.
Thank you for enlightening this chair. Majority Leader?
Mr. President, I move that we refer the privileged speech of Senator Rafi Tulfo and all the interpretations and manifestations there, they're on to the Committee on Public Order and Dangerous Drugs. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Motion's approved.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Francis Kiko Pangilinan as Chairperson of the Committee on Constitutional Amendments and Revisions, Revision of Codes, Vice Senator Robin Hood Padilla. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Motion's approved.
Mr. President, pursuant to Rule 10, Section 13 of our rules, I move to elect the following senators as members of the Committee on Constitutional Amendments and Revision of the Codes. Vice Chairperson, Senator Robin Hood Padilla, Senator Alan Peter Caetano, Senator Robin, Senator Rodante Marcoletta, Yor Strulie as Deputy Majority Leader. And the members are Senator Pia Caetano, Senator Ronald Bato Delarosa, Senator Wingat Chalian, Senator Lito Lapid, Senator Aimi Marcos, and for the minority, Senators Lauren Legarda and Senator Panfilo Lacson. And our Deputy Minority Leader, Senator Juan Miguel Zubiri. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. The aforementioned senators are hereby elected.
Mr. President, I move to elect the following senators as members of the Committee on Women, Children, and Family Relations and Gender Equality. Vice Chairperson, Senator Pia Caetano. Members, Senator Aimi Marcos, Senator Camille Villar, Senator Wingat Chalian, Senator Kiko Pangilinan, Senator Rafi Tulfo, and Senator Bamakino. For the minority with the conformity of the minority leader and deputy minority leader, Senator Zubiri, I move to elect Senator Lauren Legarda, Vice Senator Zubiri. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. The following are hereby elected as members of the Committee on Women, Children, Family Relations, and Gender Equality.
Mr. President, pursuant to Rule 10, Section 13 of our rules, I move to elect the following senators as members of the Committee on Committee on Accounts, Vice Chairpersons, Robin Hood Padilla, Yor Strulie as Deputy Majority Leader, and Senator Rodante Marcoletta. With members, Senator Ronald Bato Delarosa, Senator Christopher Bongo, Senator Wingat Chalian, Senator Pia Caetano, Senator Mark Villar, Senator Lito Lapid, and for the minority, Senator Lauren Legarda, Senator Riso Tiberos, and Deputy Minority Leader, Senator Juan Miguel Zubiri. For the Committee on Energy, Vice Chair-
Can you please move? Make a motion to?
I, so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. The aforementioned senators are hereby elected.
Mr. President, pursuant to Rule 10, Section 13 of our rules, I move to elect the following senators as members of the Committee on Energy. Vice Chairperson, Senator Alan Peter Caetano, Senator Wingat Chalian, Deputy Majority Leader, Yor Strulie, Senator JBR Cito, Senator Rodante Marcoletta. Members, Senator Bamakino, Senator Ronald Bato Delarosa, Senator Christopher Bongo, Senator Lito Lapid, Senator Robin Hood Padilla, Senator Francis Kiko Pangilinan, Senator Rafi Tulfo. For the minority, Senator Lauren Legarda, Senator Riso Tiberos, and Deputy Minority Leader, Senator Juan Miguel Zubiri. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. The aforementioned senators are hereby elected to the Committee on Energy.
Mr. President, pursuant to Rule 10, Section 13 of our rules, I move to elect the following senators as members of the Committee on Sustainable Development Goals, Innovation, and Futures Thinking. For as Vice Chairperson, Senator Camille Villar. Deputy Majority Leaders, Yor Strulie, Senator JBR Cito, Senator Rodante Marcoletta. Members, Senator Alan Peter Caetano, Senator Wingat Chalian, Senator Lito Lapid. For the minority, Senator Lauren Legarda, and Deputy Minority Leader, Senator Juan Miguel Zubiri. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. The aforementioned senators are hereby elected to the Committee on Sustainable Development Goals, Innovation, and Futures Thinking.
Mr. President, pursuant to Rule 10, Section 13 of our rules, I move to elect the following senators as members of the Committee on Ways and Means. Vice Chairperson, Senator Wingat Chalian, Senator Rodante Marcoletta, Deputy Majority Leader, Yor Strulie, Senator JBR Cito. Members, Senator Bamakino, Senator Alan Peter Caetano, Senator Ronald Bato Delarosa, Senator Christopher Bongo, Senator Lito Lapid, Senator Camille Villar, Senator Mark Villar, Senator Rafi Tulfo. For the minority, Senator Panfilo Lacson, Senator Lauren Legarda, and our Deputy Minority Leader, Senator Juan Miguel Zubiri. So move, Mr. President.
Is there an objection? There being none. The aforementioned senators are hereby elected to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Mr. President, I move that we dispense with the reading of the Journal of the Seventh Session Monday, August 11, 2020, and consider same as approved.
Is there any objection? There being none. The motion's approved.
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn the session until 3 o'clock in the afternoon Wednesday, August 13, 2025.
Is there any objection? No objection? There being none. Motion's appro, uh, session is adjourned until 3 o'clock in the afternoon tomorrow, Wednesday, August 13, 2025.